For the allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, in compliance with NJSA 10:4, the Open Public Meetings Act, and in accord with guidelines promulgated by the Division of Community Affairs related to virtual meetings, this regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Board of Adjustment has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Thank you. Can I have roll call, please?
Mr. Marr? Ms. McElhany?
Here.
Mr. Najarian?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Hurley?
Here.
Ms. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Borelli?
Here.
Mr. Costanzo?
Here.
Mr. Book?
Here. Thank you. Do we have any resolutions for approval this evening?
Yes, there are a few.
Okay.
First is Resolution 2020-19, Lazinski Block 22401, Lot 7 through 12, 510 Whitesville Road, denying an interpretation to permit an asphalt contractor in the PM1 zoning district where it is not permitted use. Eligible are Mr. Marr, Mr. Najarian, Mr. Miller, Mr. Hurley, Ms. Fritsch, Mr. Costanzo, Mr. Book.
Have a motion, please. I'll make that motion. We need a second. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Marr?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-21, White Oak LLC, Block 11501, Lot 7.02, 130 Pushkin Road, approving use and bulk variances to convert an existing two-story multi-residential structure into an inpatient residential counseling and treatment center for substance abuse problems. Eligible are Mr. Marr, Ms. McElhany, Mr. Najarian, Mr. Hurley, Ms. Fritsch, Mr. Costanzo, Mr. Book.
Can I have a motion, please? Roll call.
Mr. Marr?
Yes.
Ms. McElhany?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-22, resolution of appointments to the Board of Adjustments for the Township of Jackson for the period of July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021. Eligible are Ms. McElhany, Mr. Najarian, Mr. Hurley, Mr. Borelli, Mr. Costanzo, Mr. Book.
I have a motion, please.
Move to two.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. McElhany?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-23, Estavez Block 15805, Lot 1, 1 Morning Star Lane, granting variance approval to construct a 10-by-16 shed and a six-foot solid fence in the front yard area. Eligible are Ms. McElhany, Mr. Najarian, Mr. Hurley, Mr. Borelli, Mr. Costanzo, Mr. Book.
Motion, please.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. McElhany?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-23, Reynolds Block 12002, Lot-
That should be 24, and if it's misprinted up top, we'll fix the first page, first number.
Oh, nope, that was a typo on my end. My apologies. Resolution 2020-24, Reynolds Block 12002, Lot 5, 66 Cedar Swamp Road, granting approval of variances to construct a detached storage structure and shed. Eligible are Ms. McElhany, Mr. Najarian, Mr. Hurley, Mr. Borelli, Mr. Costanzo, Mr. Book.
Need a motion, please?
Move to two.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. McElhany?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
That concludes the resolutions for this evening.
Thank you. Do we have any minutes for approval?
Yes, from July 15th, 2020.
I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Move to two.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. McElhany?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I have one voucher here for Danielle Sinowitz for Wednesday, August 19th, amount of $150. Can I have a motion to approve her voucher?
Motion to approve that.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Marr?
Yes.
Ms. McElhany?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes, thank you. I don't see any specific announcements on our calendar.
Mr. Chairman, this is a good time to-
Deal with the calendar?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Gurn. Ladies and gentlemen, as you look at your calendar for this evening, the number one applicant is the Renee Bogart and Glenn Knowles variance 3303, and the number two is the Brian Vincent variance 3332, and the number three item on the calendar is the Joseph Sebag subdivision 648. Calendar got a little upside down. We have a conflicts attorney here today that is going to handle the Joseph Sebag application, and as a result of expediency and courtesy, and ultimately to move things along as quickly as we possibly can and be as fair as possible to everybody, we are going to take the Joseph Sebag application number one, and then we're going to leave Brian Vincent. He's in the number two spot. He's going to stay in the number two spot. He is a bulk on offense. We expect that should not be a lengthy application. And then we're going to take the Ms. Bogart, Mr. Knowles' application, which is number one, and you're going to get bumped down to number three, and then we'll deal with the county line construction application at number four. So that is the announcement. That's how we're going to move the calendar. Other than that, I'm not aware of any other announcements, Mr. Gurn. Are there anything, is there anything else?
No, sir.
No, then we're good there. I don't believe we have any matters for discussion or administrative approvals. So with that, I would move to our professionals and-
Let me swear in the professionals before I go.
Yep, okay.
Each of you would kindly raise your right hand. Each of you, cop head, to each of you kindly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Can we go to my left to right and introduce yourselves?
I'm a civil engineer.
Okay, and Mr. Hill, because of personal reasons, is available also by Zoom?
I am. Good evening.
You've been, you've been listening, correct?
I have been. Good evening, and I affirm.
And you, your affiliation, please?
Board engineer.
Evan Hill, board engineer, who's affirmed. Let me also announce, folks, that we do not have our stenographer this evening. This is being video and audio taped, but it is even that much more important to, one, don't speak over everyone, speak one at a time, and it may be easier. I know it's a little cumbersome, but as board members particularly ask questions, if you can just announce on the record, you know, it's Carl Book, it's Costanzo, it's Mr. Marr, whatever, so that the tape picks up who's speaking. Lastly, Mr. Chairman, just for this application, not only am I going to step down, but Mr. Marr also has had a conflict, so the first hold and he needs to sit in.
Okay, understood. Thank you. In that case, Sebag application is on deck. Come on up. Yes. And one additional request of everyone that is on the floor, please use the microphones. It is very difficult for us to pick up what you're saying, and we want to catch every word. Thank you. Mr. Dasty?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. How are you, sir?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
Ready to go?
We are ready.
All right. Mr. Alfieri, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the Board, Salvatore Alfieri, Cleary Giacobi, Alfieri, and Jacobs, on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Sebag.
You may proceed.
It's amazing how time flies, but this application received use variance approval from this board in April of 2018, so over two years has passed. I just wanted, for those members who weren't present in April of 2018, I'll just give you a little background as to how we arrived today. We were here, and the April approval was for devariance approval for density and for bulk variances. There were multiple bulk variances because of the density. Those bulk variances are subsumed into the devariance relief. We're not asking for new variances tonight. We're now just seeking to perfect the devariance with the subdivision approval. The property is bisected by the boundary line between Lakewood and Jackson. This subdivision will result in three homes in Jackson and four home, new homes in Lakewood. The three homes in Jackson would be David Sebag's home, which is under construction, and then two building lots. The other four lots in Lakewood will be building lots. In addition, the cul-de-sac that will service the six lots is also wholly located in Lakewood. There will have to be a municipal service agreement between Lakewood and Jackson to address taxes, maintenance of the roads, et cetera. We have not engaged in any detailed discussions with the governing bodies of each town because we wanted to get through the approval process at the boards. The Lakewood zoning board recently approved the subdivision, and this would be the last municipal approval we would need to move forward. We still have outside agency approvals, including the Ocean County Planning Board, because the road is an Ocean County road. We are bringing water and sewer to the site, and tonight with the application, not only are we seeking the subdivision, but we're amending the devariance relief. There was a Dr. Monk who lives behind this subdivision, and at the initial Lakewood approval, there was an agreement reached that there would be a buffer area that would not be disturbed between this subdivision and his home. Once the site was engineered, there had to be some changes, so Lakewood subsequently approved the subdivision approval by amending that condition to allow disturbance, and we're seeking tonight the same approval to amend that disturbance, and our engineer will describe that in more detail. And I believe that's it. We have Mr. Dipple, who is our engineer. He testified at the use variance phase, and he's again here this evening. And then Brian Flannery is our planner, who will briefly testify since the variance relief has already been granted. And I'd now like to call Mr. Dipple.
You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And can we have your name for the record, sir?
Yes, it's Michael Dipple, D-I-P-L-E.
And Mr. Dipple, since time has passed since the last hearing, would you just briefly present your credentials to the board, please?
Yes, I'm a licensed civil engineer in the state of New Jersey. I have a bachelor of science from Rutgers University in civil engineering. I've been practicing engineering for 29 years. I'm a partner at L2A Land Design LLC at 60 Grand Avenue in Englewood, New Jersey. I've been accepted here and hundreds of boards throughout the state of New Jersey. Your credentials are accepted. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a way we can get a plan posted on the board, or we, or I'm not sure who's controlling that?
That would be our IT special.
Great.
Okay.
Mike, can you ask, get them to the best plan so that they can see?
So that is my plan set, preliminary and final major subdivision. I think if you go to sheet three, perhaps, that's existing conditions, and then there's the propose.
Okay, describe for the, just refresh the board's recollection for those, and then for those who weren't here, give them some orientation as to where this property is located and what's being proposed.
Just so I know, I'm looking at the same page. Yes. The one that I'm looking at shows a revised for Jackson planning engineering traffic comment from 11/2019. Is that the same one that's up on the screen? That's correct, yes. Yes, it's revision two. So just to give you some orientation, maybe for those board members who weren't here, so we're proposing a cul-de-sac coming off of the north side of Hope Chapel Road, and then six single-family residential units off that cul-de-sac. So the cul-de-sac complies with RSIS. You can see the six units, propose two down near Hope Chapel Road. It's basically two per side as you go up the middle of the cul-de-sac. There's a black diagonal line that kind of runs right to the left of the bulb of the cul-de-sac. That is the municipal border between Jackson to the left and Lakewood to the right. The other home that came into play is Mr. Sebag's home on the left side, and that's the large shape with the circular driveway in the front. That home is constructed. It is not yet occupied, but that came into play with the subdivision. So it's pretty simple. This subdivision was fully approved and shovel-ready with five units, and we came back for the sixth unit, and that's what started this whole process with the use variance in Jackson and Lakewood and site plan approval, or rather subdivision approval in Lakewood and now finally here in Jackson. So things didn't change all that much from that prior approval. As Mr. Alfieri mentioned, there are two homes within the six proposed that are fully within Jackson Township. You can see them to the upper left of the, or to the left side of the cul-de-sac. There are two single-family homes, the ones down along Hope Chapel. We made sure that the structure itself was fully in Lakewood, and then all the structures either fully in Lakewood or fully in Jackson, but not splitting through the middle, so we just simplified it. But some of the lots actually do, the proposed lots, do have some of their property in one town and some in the other. So it's pretty straightforward. We have, we had county approval for this. We have amended it. We've submitted for amendments. We had soil erosion approval. We've submitted for an amendment. We have treatment works approval for the sewer. We do need to seek an amendment to that because we have a change in flow with the sixth unit, and I might miss an approval here or there, but we are fully getting close to the very end here of the necessary approvals in order to get this under construction.
So in the professional reports, there's a reference to the fact that the homes will have up to six bedrooms, and based upon the six-bedroom count, is the parking per lot complying with RSIS standards?
Yes, it is. We show six cars per lot. There's two in each garage and then four in the driveway. RSIS only runs up to a five-bedroom house, which requires six parking space, I'm sorry, three parking spaces, and we're proposing six, so we exceed that by quite a few.
And the houses will have basements. Once plot plans are designed, whether they're walkout or not, it would depend on the topography, but that would be part of the building permit process. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Based upon the fact that there are six lots, can you describe for the board the traffic impact, if any, the six lots will have on the road off the cul-de-sac?
So it'll be minimal. RSIS lists gives you 10.1, I think it is, trips per day for a single-family detached dwelling. We have six of them here. 60.6 is a simple calculation, but that's over a day. Typically, a traffic engineer coming in here to testify would tell you that 100 trips per peak hour would be significant, so therefore 60.6 in a day clearly is not significant. I think anyone would agree with me that single-family residence is not a big traffic generator, but to compound my argument, we have received county approval. It is on a county road. They look at traffic. We did a traffic study. They look at traffic even for a site of this size, and they have approved it, so.
And are there any wetlands located onsite or offsite that would impact this development?
No, there are not. It's a fairly steep sloping site coming in off of Hope Chapel Road. I've walked the site many, many times in the last seven years I've been working on this, so it's, there's no wetlands anywhere near.
And I'm going to ask you in a moment to describe the changes to the rear of the property relating to the previous condition of approval, but just for the board's edification, we, Alan Weiss is the attorney for Dr. Monk, the property owner to the rear. We have entered into an agreement with him. He's not going to show up to object to the application. We've worked out whatever differences we have, and we're guaranteeing him that whatever we do on site will not impact the trees and drainage on his property. So would you describe for the board what has changed since the devariance application?
If you don't mind just turning to sheet CO6, but it's not the sixth sheet in the set. I think it's probably the ninth sheet. There's a couple of ABC sheets, but maybe go to the landscaping plan. So there's, that's O4. That's, we had to do these profiles for the county, so that's why we have extra sheets here. This is part of our county approval. Keep going, the next sheet, and that, okay, go one more sheet, and I think that, there you go. That's the landscaping plan. So what Mr. Alfieri is referring to is, you can see along the top of the page or the back of the development, there's a double row of evergreen trees. So this was the discussion, we were supposed to preserve the back 30 feet as it is, but the grade change is so significant that in order to grade the cul-de-sac properly and then get to the homes with the proper driveway slope and then build the two homes in the rear, we would end up with these massive retaining walls, which just didn't seem right for the development or future homeowners or even the gentleman to the back. So we renegotiated. We went out there, the neighbor has quite a wide tree stand in the rear. He's got mature trees and a double or triple row of evergreens. So Mr. Sebag promised to do a double row of evergreen trees as part of the agreement within that area, and that's depicted there, so that's where it all landed.
But the 30, we had agreed to a 30-foot-wide buffer previously?
Yeah.
And that would be maintained as well?
That's correct. I'm sorry, the dimension was 30 feet to be maintained and include that row of evergreen trees.
So we would still memorialize that buffer in an easement document. The dimensions won't change, it's just that we're going to disturb and replant in that area.
That's correct, yes.
Is that correct? There have been, there have been reports issued by Mr. Hill, by Mr. Peters, by Mr. Miskovich, and by CME, and many of the comments are listed as addressed, but there are several comments, technical comments contained within those reports. Rather than going point by point, could you testify that all of their technical comments will be addressed to the satisfaction of the board professionals?
I can, yes.
Okay, and obviously you'll be prepared to answer any questions that the professionals have if they want you to focus on anything specific.
I am.
That's all we have, Mr. Chair.
If I may, through the chair, Steve Costanzo. The two properties, Lot 1407 and 1406, you're proposing to have six bedrooms. Did I hear that correctly?
Up to six bedrooms on any of the homes, yes.
Okay. And those two lots that I specified will have egress into the basement directly from an outside entrance?
Potentially, yes. So we would stipulate, if you wanted a deed restriction, that it can't, there can't be bedrooms and whatever other stipulations you want, that we won't exceed what we've represented.
Okay, because that would be my concern, that it turns into a mother-daughter.
That's understood. Yeah, single-family home, no issues with that.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Do you have a question relative to the drainage?
Microphone.
I have, is this on? Okay. I have a question relative to the drainage. I noticed that you've got a number of homes, but it appears that all of the drainage is going to run down into Hope Chapel, I presume, correct?
It's-
The county's already approved that?
What we designed and what was approved in Lakewood was drainage, a detention system within the proposed cul-de-sac, and that is depicted on sheet CO4, I believe. So within the right-of-way in Lakewood, we have a drainage system, and then for each home, we essentially collect the roof runoff, so it's like a modified drywell system. We use, it's slightly larger, and each home has that just-for-the-roof drainage and maybe a little yard drainage, too. And that's how we, that's how we manage.
You're telling me, if I understood you correctly, there's an underground drainage basin?
There's an, under, there are multiple underground systems. There's one per home, just to collect the roof runoff and some of the yard, and then there's a larger system which runs in the right-of-way within Hope Chapel Road.
And that's to retain the flow?
Exactly, yeah.
All right, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Through the chair, may I follow up to board member's question? On those individual homes that have the roof drain system, what would be the capacity? Is it a 50-year, 100-year system?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't recall. We submitted a drainage report. I don't have a copy with me tonight. There is, yeah, I think we, you know, this is, this is a major development, so we have to follow the major development rules. I don't, I can't place a year on each one of these. It's the roof leader, so we look at the whole thing as a whole, and the way we solve the problem is essentially you grab as much roof runoff as you can, you put that into the ground because that's clean water, and then you manage the rest of your site. So I think they have the capacity to hold a 100-year storm off of, off of the roof. They're quite large. They're underground, like an arch system in stone, so it's a big stone bed. So you grabbed a 100-year runoff, you put that into the system, that takes that off the table, and then you manage the rest of the cul-de-sac through a common system, which we depict in the right-of-way. That's how we do it.
And I would defer to Mr. Hill, if he has any input into that?
I do, thank you, Steve. So the applicant's attorney is correct, they're, the, all of the infiltration systems are designed to accommodate these and store the 100-year storm. We have several comments within our letter that I've asked for additional information regarding the subsurface soils. The infiltration rate that is utilized within their report is an assumed rate based on published data, and it is not site-specific. So we did ask that those site-specific infiltration tests be performed on each lot and also within the subsurface drainage located within the roadway to confirm their calculations and that the systems are adequately sized. I think there was a comment from the applicant's engineer or attorney that they prefer to do that at time of plot plan submission. However, it's been this board's practice to require that as part of the resolution compliance phase to make sure that nothing else has to change from the time that we approved, finally approved it, to the point that it's ready for plot plans with the township.
And that's acceptable.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Zoning officer, quick question about that 30-foot buffer, on the landscaping buffer you talked about. Can that be a line shown on a plan also to be de-restricted, or is it just a de-restriction?
We're preparing easement, but if you want to see a line on the plan, we could certainly provide that.
I think that would be best for-
That's fine.
-the future. Thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes. Scott Najarian. The water table, have you done bore holes to find out the water table? We've got basements to get strong. Turn it up safe.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall. It sounds like I'm going to refer to your engineer. He's looking at my report. I didn't bring the report with me. My apologies. It looks like we deferred some of that till later. It's extreme, I've been to the site, it's extremely sandy soil, as one would expect in Jackson. And in Lakewood, there could be a restrictive layer, but I don't think, based upon the topography, that we're going to get a very significantly high water table. These are shallow systems, but again, I feel confident that we can comply here and we can engineer this properly, even if we have to shift things around, that it can be engineered properly in order to, and this is our design. And this is our design. There's, could be, you know, I could go in a bunch of different directions and comply here. This is what we, this is what we propose, so. Sure.
The soil removal ordinance? Just want to make sure you abide by it if you're planning on bringing in new dirt, to make sure it's environmentally clean and okay for the surrounding area of that property.
In my opinion, this, this site, because of the cul-de-sac that they cut, it's definitely a... So I'd have to read that soil ordinance regarding removal of soil because in my estimation, just to make this cul-de-sac work, and I don't think we really quite balance this site.
So it's more likely we're exporting soil, not importing?
To me, this looks like a soil export job. You know, I don't, I don't recall. I think we've run the numbers a number of times over the past so many years I've been working on this. I'm sorry, I don't have it at my fingertips, but it is... We really have to bring the site down low, much lower to, you know, the extent of, you know, six, seven feet around the cul-de-sac, just to get the road to work per RSIIS. So I'm guessing I'm not going to be able to make that up elsewhere, especially I'm digging basements, so. It's probably an export job. And we would, we would comply with whatever the ordinance says, yeah.
I have one statement. I just want to make sure that you'll, I guess, revise your tree removal numbers since you're now going to enter that buffer area, and then you'll submit that revised calculation to the township's licensed tree expert.
We will. We are entering that buffer area, but, but yes, we will, we will. We noticed the comment in, in Remington Vernix's letter, I believe, or was it CME's letter?
Maybe in CME. It's definitely in Remington.
So, so we are aware of the tree removal ordinance. That ordinance, I actually brought a copy of. So we're very well aware of it, and we've done the calculations, and we have a tree removal plan in the set.
In a general question, they've addressed most of the comments in my first review letter. The majority addressed the parking requirements of RSIIS. So some of the dimensions shown on the plan for driveway width, the length, et cetera, did not comply. It now does comply. But I notice on the plan that the buildings are within what is shown as the setback, the front yard setback. So I think what's critical is the dimension that they show from the property line to the garage door. It's critical to maintain enough driveway length to park those cars. My suggestion would be that that could be some, rather than just shown on the plan, stipulated in the agreement or the approval, that those dimensions shown are minimum distances to be met.
So we, we do actually dimension them in one location, and that's on lot 1407. And just for the board's benefit, they are shown at a nine-by-18 or a typical RSIIS parking space. And if you look at lot 1407, that lot got the dimensions. A couple of them did, too, I guess.
Well...
But that, that's how, I just, that's how we calculate it. So, just so the board understand, we did use a proper-sized space, and we did widen the driveways out to 20 feet per RSIIS.
But we'll agree that the length will be sufficient to provide the parking that you've stipulated we would provide.
On the plan that's shown here with revision number two, each driveway has its dimension from property line to the building front, that's the garages. Okay, and I'm just saying that that should be a minimum, just to ensure that we have adequate, when the builder goes there, that there's enough distance to park those cars. Because I don't know if there was a variance granted for front yard setback at this initial stage.
There was. And I fully agree with your comment. And to, you know, to put the board's mind at ease even more, you are correct. We did receive front yard setback variances, so we're held to the plan. We can't move the building any closer because those C variances were subsumed into the D variance and were shown on the plan.
But that would be acceptable as a minimum, okay?
We would agree.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, did you ask if, if, did you ask for me? Okay, so your microphone is very, very faint. I can barely hear you.
How about, how about now? Any better?
Much better, thank you.
Any question, any further questions of Mr. Dipple?
Well, I think, I believe I heard the applicant and their attorney indicate that they're going to comply with all the technical requirements of our letter. Most of them did pertain to the stormwater management system and then performing site-specific tests, which they've agreed to do as part of resolution compliance. You know, we still haven't, we still have, we still haven't received architectural plans yet for these homes. That's typically submitted as part of the package. So the board should decide if that's going to be deferred to resolution compliance or if that's something that they want to see as a board. They did indicate Ocean County Planning Board, I believe, is still pending. Is that correct?
You know, I'd have to check on that. But I believe so. A lot of time has passed. But we, we did have Ocean County Planning Board approval for five lots. I know that. We may have amended it. I'll check.
Okay, and the only other question I had, and it's still, it did pertain to the stormwater management systems. Because each lot is going to be own, essentially own and operate their own system, we would like to see, first of all, confirm who's going to, who's going to own those individual underground stormwater infiltration basins and ultimately talk about, on the plans, about the operations and maintenance and maintenance of those, those systems as well. We did talk about also making sure that those areas are adequately protected from future development, either through a deed restriction or some type of deed language. Let's see. And I, that's really the bulk of our comments, in addition to a bunch of, a bunch of smaller ones.
So in response to Mr. Hill's comments, first of all, yes, we will provide whatever easements are necessary for each individual homeowner so that they have knowledge of what's on their property and how it needs to be maintained, and we'll work with the board attorney as part of the developer's agreement process to perfect that. And as it relates to the architecturals, these are going to be six custom homes, so we don't really have an architectural, but I think it's Mr. Hill says it in his letter that we, that the footprint, I think it was 2,460 square feet. I'm trying to find that now, that's correct on memory, yes. So we were to stipulate that the footprints will not exceed the 2,460, and we've already said that up to six bedrooms, so you at least should have an idea of the mass of the home. But again, with a custom home, we don't know, we could show you a typical home, but it doesn't mean that's what's going to be built.
Okay, all right, and that's not necessarily uncommon. I think, you know, there's just, there has to be coordination between the, ultimately, the board-approved plans and the township engineer when they perform their plot plan review. So Jeff, you may want to make a note of the, on the file that each lot has to be reviewed on a lot-by-lot basis at the time of plot plan submission.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
That's all we have of Mr. Dipple. You want us to call Mr. Flannery, and then you can do the public?
Yes.
All right, he'll be very brief. Brian?
Thank you.
Mr. Flannery, you raise your right hand. You swear affirm to testify truthfully in this matter before the board?
I do. Brian Flannery Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. I have been practicing for more than 30 years, before hundreds of boards throughout the state of New Jersey, including Jackson.
Your credentials are accepted, Mr. Flannery.
And Miss, go ahead, Miss Flannery.
The, excuse me, can you just spell your last name?
F-L-A-N-N-E-R-Y.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
The plans that are submitted this evening are virtually the same as what was presented when we came for the use variance. The one difference, as Mr. Dipple explained, is with respect to the 30-foot buffer in the back, where it was indicated that it would be natural vegetation, and we've changed that now to where it's going to be a planted buffer, but it will still have all the same buffer restrictions and everything else. All of the bulk variance relief that was granted, and it is listed in Mr. Peters' letter, was granted at the time of that approval.
New variance is associated with this plan?
That is correct.
That's all we have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Flannery? No questions from the board professionals? Any questions of Mr. Flannery? Mr. Jones, you were good?
I am good.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Flannery.
That concludes our presentation.
All right, thank you. All right, at this point, I will open the meeting to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to come forward and be heard on this application or has a question of the applicant? I see no one from the audience. Is there anyone out there in IT land, Mr. IT professional? No one? Thank you. In that case, since there's no one, no one there, no one wishes to be heard, I will close the public portion of the hearing. Mr. Alfieri?
Thank you for your time. We've, the hard work was getting the de-variants relief and working with the neighbor to get things resolved, so we requested the board approve the plans as they've seen the first approval and then obviously this evening.
My board is in our hands. Any thoughts, comments, motions? I can't hear you.
No, you have a microphone.
Use the mic.
Will we get a chance to review the plans for the homes, or we're just going to approve this? And then at what point will we come back and see the?
See, all you're approving are the lot lines, the individual building permits, and that plot plan process is to handle through your zoning officer in the building department. We have to comply with your ordinance. We have to comply with the conditions of approval. But you're really just creating the lots and then making sure that the drainage and the roadway work. Well, the road is Lakewood, but the drainage works.
And also, there was earlier testimony that the average square footage of the homes was roughly about 2,400 square feet.
We're 2,460. The footprint will not exceed that.
And six-bedroom by design, but other than that, I don't, you know, they're being custom homes.
Right, okay. Are they on well-inseptic?
No, we're bringing water and soil.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant or concerns, board members? I have a motion on this application for preliminary and made, and final major subdivision, and also for their request for the amended D variance regarding the buffer.
Mr. Chair, if you want, I could recite the notes that I have in terms of what the conditions of approval are, so you all know.
Thank you very much, Mr. Desti, please, yes.
So as I understand it, the, the conditions, if the board would act favorably, is that there will be a new double row of evergreen trees in the rear of lot 14... My eyes aren't that good. 1406? Right? As well as a 30-foot buffer that was originally approved in the use variance application. The homes will be limited to a maximum of six bedrooms. The the applicant will revise their tree removal calculations in accordance with the review letter of CME Associates. The applicant will comply with all the setback requirements as previously approved with the use variance application a couple of years ago. The applicant will comply with all of the technical reviews, comments of the board engineers that were issued, engineer memoriam's were issued last year. There is going to be a deed restriction with regard to the, the use and maintenance of the stormware drainage systems for the six individual lots. The square footage of the homes will not exceed the footprint, which, as I understand, is 2,460. And I think that's all the comments that I have on this.
If I may, through the chair, Steve Costanzo, I just want to clarify that the fact that they're proposing the basement access, that there won't be a second residence established.
Correct, I, you're absolutely correct. It will be a, a single-family homes. So the six bedrooms will be for all, all people of that family, and it will not be a secondary use or a mother-daughter use in the basement.
Yes, single-family home. Zoning, it would need a variance for anything. Other than that, we're not asking for that relief.
Thank you, Mr. Costanzo.
Do I have a second? Go call, please.
Ms. McElhany?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yeah.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes. Application's approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vincent, you are next. Welcome back, Mr. Vincent. Hello, and Mr. Mark, thank you. So, I'm on a corner lot.
Hang on, sir. Mr. Vincent, if you kindly raise your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm the testimony and information you're about to give is truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Can you first speak clearly into the microphone? I apologize.
I'll do the best I can.
Can you please give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please?
Brian Vincent, last name is spelled V-I-N-C-E-N-T. My address is 6 Veronica Court. It's a New Egypt mailing address. I'm on the Jackson-New Egypt border.
Mr. Vincent, I'm going to ask you if you can. I'm getting a little old, and I'm getting a little hard of hearing. So, if you can just keep that mic a little clo, there you go.
All right.
That's going to help us out tremendously. Thank you. You may proceed.
Right, so I'm on the Jackson-New Egypt border. I'm on a corner lot. Want a six-foot solid fence. The one thing the application doesn't say is I would like the fence to be constructed right inside the tree line, which is about 10 feet off the street. And that's pretty much the application. It says front yard, but the corner lot, the side yard is the front yard.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Hill, I know we always go to you regarding measurements because we don't like to use off the street. Have you been able to at least give an estimate of how far off the property line?
Mr. Hill, you may be talking, but we can't hear you.
If I may?
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
There is a six-foot shade tree easement that is six feet from the property line. Do you want to put it beyond?
It'll be inside that, yeah.
Well, outside.
Outside that, yeah.
So it would be at least six feet from the property line, and it'll be outside of the, that'll be outside of the shade tree and utility easement.
That's fine. I can, should the board approve, I can draw that resolution that way.
That, that's what you intend to do, sir?
Yes.
I'm looking at your plan, and it looks like you had it highlighted in orange, and then as you come along the, I guess, the rear portion, there's a notice, it says, "Stop at neighbor's fence." Does your, does your neighbor have a fence along that portion of the property line?
Yes.
Where you're not putting a fence?
Yes.
And after the fence is completed, will that, will that encapsulate or fence your entire property in, in the back?
Yes.
And, and the reason you want to do that is? Why do you want to fence the yard in?
Privacy.
Safety and security as well?
Yes.
Does anybody from the board have any additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question, really, for the zoning officer. Mr. Hill, I missed a hill, Mr. Poporo, there's also another, if you look at the submission, there's another section of a fence. I can't tell north, southeast, or west here, at least. It's just a short that goes from the front of his property to the side yard towards lot 9.18. Does that portion of the fence by itself need a variance?
It does not.
Yeah, okay, that's right. Thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes.
If I may, if I may ask, site triangles, I'm looking at the driveway, and the fact that the fence, I believe, runs along his driveway towards the street, but stops at that six-foot setback to the tree line, will that be a, for his own safety, his family's safety, will, does that fall within the sight line, that driveway area? There's no documented sight triangle on a driveway. It's really up to his own peril to be careful driving back into your driveway. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, we typically, in those circumstances, ask the resolution, should you approve it, as a condition requires that there, that it not be in a legitimate sight triangle, so he may be forced to have a survey articulate where that sight triangle would be.
Do you understand the implications of that, Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Okay. Because that is pretty critical. We don't want you or anybody coming out of your property backing up to get in an accident or cause anyone else to be in an accident.
Excuse me, I'm not clear on what you're asking.
It, what was asked was whether or not at the fence line on Bain that runs from the property to the shade tree easement, I know that's six foot back, but Mr. Costanzo asked, is that, is any part of that box potentially a vision issue? It probably is not, since it's six foot back, but he needs to check with the board engineer, and if there's a chance that it is, as a condition of approval, he'd have to get a sight triangle measured, which we've done in the past.
All right, now, I understand, but technically, there's no sight triangle requirements for a driveway, but I guess you're asking for it as an internal?
Yet, as an issue of protection, yep, that's the condition of the variant, which the board has done before.
Any other questions from the board? Nothing further? Mr. Jones, any concerns, questions?
I don't have any concerns or questions. I would defer to Sean, obviously, we're here. Is this a variance?
Yes.
We are, even though it's in the way, it would be technically a waiver section? Standard protocol.
Mr. Miskovich, I take it there's no questions or issues to you on this application?
No.
All right. And Mr. Hill, we were trying to reach out, you don't know if you're there or not? You dropped off? Okay. Well, then, we're going to proceed without Mr. Hill for the moment. All right. Is there anything further, Mr. Vincent?
No.
All right. No further questions from the board? In that case, I close this portion of the hearing, and I open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that wants to be heard on this application?
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may ask, our IT professional, how many members of the public are on right now? And are any hands being raised? 16 and 0.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In which case, then, I'm going to close the public portion, and it's now in the board's hands. Board, do I have a motion, or questions, or concerns?
I would forward a motion to approve this application with, it's a concern, you know, his own family's safety, pulling out of his driveway. I don't want it to be, you know, undue hardship on him, but it's a concern. But I would, I would motion to approve this application.
I'll say. Roll call, please.
Mr. Moore? Ms. McElhany?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Miller? Mr. Hurley? Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes. Application's approved. Thank you. All right. Ms. Bogart and Mr. Knowles, come forward, please.
Okay, we are finally ready for you guys, full board. Thank you for your patience, first of all. But on behalf of the board, I can, I want that as part of the record, that you all were patient too, and then everything that could, you know, who knew a hurricane would force the meeting even two weeks ago off, so we thank you. If each of you would kindly raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony and information you're about to give to the board be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Can each of you separately but clearly give us your full names, spell your last, and your address, please?
Renee Bogart, B-O-G-A-R-T, 485 Tom's River Road, Jackson, New Jersey.
Glenn Knowles, K-N-O-W-L-E-S, 485 Tom's River Road, Jackson, New Jersey.
You may proceed.
So we're looking to build an extension on our garage, basically, for a small woodworking shop, so I wanted to let Glenn kind of talk a little bit more about it.
I fairly recently had the opportunity to bump into our neighbor to the north, Christine, I'm sorry, south border of the property. She thought I was an oddly behaving deer, so I said she thought I was an oddly behaving deer at her property line, so we had a laugh about that. And after some talk, she asked about the letter that we had, that she had received regarding the project, and she said, "You're starting a business." And I said, "Well, not exactly what I'm doing, is I'm looking to transition from 30-plus years of operating a business and transitioning to what is essentially a retirement space." Space that I've been interested in creating, in the place that I as well live for many years, so the time has come for me to do that. Generally, woodworkers don't give up their tools, so my interest is to consolidate my tools, my craft, and my home to one location. That is the short of my interest of what I am here to pitch, so. I believe there are letters and specifications of the project. Letters stating my background with my work.
What letters are you referring to?
Oh, there's a cover lever with our application. But any questions you may have are quite simple to address in terms of my, my background. Otherwise, Mr. Betts here to my right is here to talk about the technicalities of the project.
Do any board members have any questions of Mr. Knowles or Ms. Bogart? Mr. Hurley?
For a variance for a principal use not permitted, or is it a home occupation?
So, if I may, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hurley, I agree with the question. That's one reason, I think, even before you were appointed, we've asked the applicant to provide a planner, who, instead of me answer, asking, I respectfully suggested that the planner testify, and we can hone in what they're really asking for. That's been an open question, quite frankly. But the plan, so you got a heads up on one of the first things you're going to have to deal with. Why don't you come up?
Do you mind if I have a seat? I have Achilles tendonitis, and I have to sit down.
Sir, kindly raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony and information you're about to give is the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, your affiliation, and some qualification?
Certainly. My name is Edward Betz, B as in Bravo, E-T-Z as in Zulu. I'm a professional engineer, professional planner, engaged by Mr. Knowles and Mrs. Bogart to help them with their application. I've been a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey for 35 years, acting as a consultant. I've also been a professional planner in the state of New Jersey for 23 years. I've been accepted as an expert in both many, many boards and many courts.
Have you ever been accepted here before, Mr. Betz?
Not in Jackson, no.
All right, nevertheless, your credentials are accepted. Thank you.
Thank you.
You may proceed.
What Mr. Knowles was explaining to you is his planned retirement. He, he's a modest man, and so I'm going to take a little liberty to explain a little bit about him, but he's an artisan. He does fine woodwork. He currently works, or has a shop in Montclair, where he does high-end work for very wealthy clients and provides very high-end commercial businesses. He plans to retire. As he puts it, he doesn't want to put his tools away, he wants to keep his hands and his mind active, his heart as well, and he wants to do fine woodworking in Jackson on a much smaller scale, and he put together a plan to build a 50-foot by 50-foot square building, and I can see it in the bottom right-hand corner of the drawing there. It's 50 by 50-foot pole barn, single-story, roughly 15 feet tall, and he's placing it, or he's proposing to place it right behind an existing garage. It will be attached to the garage. The only entrance into his addition pole barn would be through the existing garage. We're requesting a type D1 use variance, and we're requesting a C bulk variance, which I'll get into the details of. The lot, the current lot, is a residential home. It's .92 acres. It's now in the FA6 zone, six acres, and clearly, the house and all the appurtenances don't, in all ways, conform to the FA6 zoning, which was imposed upon the property well after the house was built. So the first thing I'd like to address is the D1 variance, the use variance. We're asking that it be considered a roadside retail business. As such, he's going to have a small sign out front, and he would invite passerby's, people such as ourselves, to come, enter his shop, and request something to be made. He was kind enough at my request to bring one of his articles. He does very, very fine work. That would be custom-made. If you had an anniversary coming up, and you need an idea for your wife, he could pull into his shop, and he would whip one of these things out for you. As I said, he's retired. This is not a manufacturing plant. This is a hobby, but he feels that the 50 by 50 square foot is what he needs for stored material and for room to work and whatnot. The addressing the use variance at the positive criteria, what he brings to this town is he's an artisan. He's kind of, if you've ever been a New Hope, Pennsylvania. He brings a craft and a product to the town that we don't currently have. In addition to that, he's also hoping, or planning, to bring in apprentices, he being a mentor, bringing in somebody from high school or post-high school. He's already been contacting the Ocean County Votech School, which is just up the street from him, and asking if he could get some students to come visit him, and he would train them on this fine craft. It's a lost art. Right now, woodworking is how to use a CNC machine and push a few buttons, and he doesn't do that. So I see him bringing to this town not only a small shop, a small boutique, boutique business, but also sharing an almost lost craft with some of our youth. Addressing the negative criteria. The proposed building is 30 feet away from the fence line for neighboring property. It's well buffered with trees. His building will be insulated, so as far as sight, sight view, and as far as sound issues, I think he's addressed that with the buffer, the natural buffer, and with insulation on the building. It's a very small, almost a hobby, if you would. He's not going to be expecting cars coming and going. There won't be any increased traffic flow on the highway. He's not going to be ordering materials coming in by truck. He's not going to be shipping products out by truck. He's a one-man operation with an apprentice, building fine crafts that you just don't knock out enough of them to make this a very big business. So it's more or less a glorified hobby. I don't see that this in any way would use up any more services of the township. So I believe he meets the negative criteria. I believe for the positive criteria, he's bringing something attractive to the town and offering us a service, and also an educational opportunity. Addressing, should I stop for questions, or should I move on?
Well, if I may, to follow up on Mr. Hurley's question to you, you're in receipt of Remington Vernix's letter dated November 26, 2019, I presume?
Yes.
Okay, and you'll see in there that in my opinion, at least, and certainly Mr. Jones can speak on behalf of his office, but page three lists out the criterion for a home occupation. However, at page 4.4B, the applicant should discuss the operation of the business to determine if the business could be considered a roadside retail sales or service establishment. You've articulated that that's how, that's how you perceive this variance should process, but if you could go through the points of the ordinance, and what, from what conditions you need relief, I think that would be helpful for the board.
Certainly.
Along with hours of operation, you know, number of employees, because remember, not to overtry or over-assist, you know, you need a bulk variance for the size of the lot. Now, it's existing, but I think the board should hear that.
Well, the reason we call it, we're applying as roadside retail, is it seems a little more apropos. He's going to have a shingle out front advertising his wares, his services, and people will be coming and going to his place of business to purchase or to order a custom item for later purchase. Is it a home business? Of course it is. But I guess every roadside, many roadside retail businesses are home businesses, if you sell vegetables out front, whatnot. We can certainly address the home business criteria. The one issue there is employees. You're not allowed to have a home employee. He plans on having apprentices. Originally, we spoke about volunteers, kids that wanted to come and learn, and he would be more than happy to train them for their labor, old-school master apprentice program. Unfortunately, in our legal system, you really can't do that anymore. You have issues with labor laws, and you have issues with accidents and workers' compensation, so he unfortunately is forced to So, he unfortunately is forced to pay any apprentice he wants to bring on board.
I'm sorry, repeat that last sentence?
He's, in essence, he must pay any apprentice that he brings to his shop for workers' compensation in case there's an accident, and some dangers, machines, also labor laws. I don't know much about them, but clearly, an employee, employer relationship is a much safer place to be.
So, let me, along those lines, and something, so I apologize, folks, but, and I don't mean disrespect, but with Mr. Hill on the Zoom and Ashton covering, I'm utilizing the fact that I have a degree in urban planning. I can work in 46 of 50 states. I do not have a license, but I'm going to assist. So, one of the, one of the issues that the board generally has is, again, as you said, there's no employees, and of course, again, utilizing the conditions of the home-based business coupled with the size of the lot. Where's the parking going to occur? If there are folk, if there's, if it's a quasi-retail establishment, there should be some testimony as to circulation, parking, not just the sign, but what type of advertising is going on on the site?
Of course. Parking, if you look at the site plan, he has an asphalt driveway which services the home itself and the garage, which is built part of the home. But there's an offshoot to the main driveway, which goes over to an existing garage. It's a two-car wide garage. The last time I visited the site, he had four cars parked over there comfortably, and I was able to pull in and out. So, again, he's not expecting a lot of customers to come flying to his, his business, and many of them he may have to chase away for, for lack of the ability to meet their needs. So, I don't see a parking issue. Perhaps if two, three clients showed up at a time, there's enough parking. As far as a home business, a home business, you're not supposed to put a sign out front. And that's why we're really calling this, we're trying to be honest, and really calling this a roadside business. He wants a small sign, probably a custom-crafted work of art, small, and you could testify to the size of the sign, basically saying who he is, fine, fine woodworking, very simple. And that would be to let people know that he is there. I don't think he plans on doing much advertising. Again, just a couple of visitors a day, maybe a couple of visitors a week. Can't anticipate his volume of visitors, but I can anticipate his volume of materials, and he's not going to have a lot to sell.
Mr. Betz, I'm going to jump in a little bit here to just give you a sense of my concern and my thought, is, is I drove by the location, and I see how busy that street is. And I also noticed clearly how tight all the houses are in that little strip. And, and I'm looking at the, the proposed building, and it's 2,500 square feet. Quite frankly, that's probably bigger than everything that's on his, otherwise on his lot, bigger than his house and bigger than the other houses on the, on the other lot. So, right away, what comes to my mind is we're having a super-intensive use of this property on, on a lot that it doesn't, doesn't, it seems too small for it. And then the size of this structure, in my mind, belies what, what Mr. Knowles says his purpose and intent is. I'm thinking of a, and you're using the word "small," a small hometown shop. He's, he's a craftsman. There's no doubt in my mind that he's a craftsman, and that's not an issue in my head. But now I'm thinking about, that this really isn't, you know, just a phasing down and where he's going to, to work at a much lower level. I don't know what he's comparing it to in terms of what he's doing, but then I look at his, at his, his letter, and it's a lovely letter, and he says the type of equipment he's going to have in there. He's going to have a table saw, a planer, a jointer, a drum sander, a drill press, dust extraction system, and hand tools inside this 2,500-square-foot facility. And, and, and you're telling me that, oh no, this is just a boutique. This is a boutique practice, a boutique. And I'm having a hard time reconciling the tip, so...
I'm smiling because I asked him the same question. And I'm not saying I agree with you, but I'm saying that was my first question.
So, right away, I'm concerned, especially when I, when I go through Mr., Mr. Peters, yeah, when I go through Mr. Peters' letter. Mr. Peters, he, he's got a litany of items in here that, that he's saying needs to be addressed. One of them is, well, what about testimony regarding no noise, odors, fire hazards, and safety hazards? Right away, I'm looking at the size of this building, I'm looking at what he's putting in it, and I'm not hearing any testimony as to how that's getting addressed. Then, then I'm, I'm looking at, well, utilities, you can address that, I suppose, traffic impacts. That's a tight road. And I, and I'm, and I'm not really hearing, you know, if, if he's going to have a sign out front and people are going to pull over. I couldn't pull over. I almost got hit on that road. You either got to pull into his property, or I have to go down and do a loop around and come back, and you have to be very careful on that road. So, that's another consideration that came into my mind. How, how is he going to, or how's your, your applicant going to deal with the, with those traffic issues, especially if people are going to, are going to pull in? So, those are just some of the issues, and I really would like to hear some testimony on that. And my bet is that some of the board members up here are going to follow up on similar questions in that regard, and it's going to dovetail into, into the, into our zoner and planner's questions as well. That's my quick overview and thought. Questions, answers? I'd love to hear some more answers on those.
Fair enough. I, I was grinning before because I, my, my question was the same. If this is a small retirement business, why a 50-foot by 50-foot building? And Mr. Knowles should really address that question, because I'm not a woodworker, I don't have a, a shop, and I don't know how many square feet you need to walk around at a table saw or some of the other pieces of equipment. So, I can't address that. He assured me that this is what he really feels that he needs to comfortably do what he wants to do. And I would think he could possibly answer that better than I. As far as traffic, I would anticipate just several visits a day if he's lucky. You're absolutely right. It's a very fast major throughway. He is on the straightaway. There's no curves. There's good visibility. There's somewhat of a shoulder, not a big shoulder, but this is really no different than some of the families that live up the home that have a number of children living with them, and they have multiple cars in their driveway, three, four cars in their driveway coming and going. So, you're not impacting the traffic as far as volume. Would a traveler go down the road and see a sign and say, oh, boy, I want to stop and hit the brakes and cause an accident? Yeah, possibly.
Well, so may I follow with that right there? So, this is a county road. I guess this is, hopefully, Mr. Hill, I know he's on the phone now, so maybe he can be allowed via the phone to talk, or if Mr. Jones. But this is a county road. You're, you've determined to ask for a second principal use to be permitted on the site. Does that trigger the necessity of county approval, is, because this is a county road?
In my opinion, no. Not, not, we're not asking for a second principal use. We're asking for an auxiliary use, in essence. This is a part-time auxiliary. This is a part-time business that he wants...
So, Sean, Sean, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. If there are no site plan issues or requirements or improvements required by the board to trigger county planning board approval, then the applicant's engineer is correct. Just the used variance alone does not trigger a, a site plan application or any application to the county for a home-based business type.
But he's not asking, Mr. Hill, for a home-based business. He's asking...
Or an accessory.
But he's not, it's not an accessory use either. That's why Mr. Hurley asked the question. This is a separate conditional use permitted in the zone. So, from a technical, it's a D1 variance to allow two principal uses. Now, if he asks for a home-based business and not the, the retail, then arguably, it is in fact a accessory to the main structure, because the ordinance, the ordinance structure itself presumes that a home-based business is ancillary, ancillary, I'm sorry, ancillary to the principal use. But that's not what the applicant's planner just testified and engineer just testified to. So, I guess the follow-up question, Mr. Hill, is, and maybe it's too premature, but should the board be asking for site improvements? Should it otherwise approve the D1 variance as requested by the applicant?
So, in, in this case, we've, and I know he's not technically asking or indicating this is a home-based type business. However, it's very similar to one. I don't, I don't like to muddy the water that way. However, based on the testimony put on the record, this is not going to be a high-intensity use from a public perspective. It sounds like they'll have, may have a UPS vehicle every few, every so often, maybe a single client coming to pick up a piece or look at a piece, but it's not a retail store or establishment that has set hours where people can just show up. It sounds like it's also mostly just by appointment as well. Because of that, or understanding that the board would need to take a look at this, the way the site is currently configured, and determine if additional improvements would be required to accommodate that use. Me, from an engineering perspective, based on what I've heard, I don't believe there are any uses that they've indicated in their operations to rise to the level of requiring additional site improvements. But I'm not a voting member on the board.
Let me just say that, yes, it is very close. It basically is a home business in practicality. The reason we're applying for the, the roadside business is because Mr. Knowles wanted to put a sign out, and he wanted to bring in a trainee, which unfortunately has to be a paid employee. And by definition, that's not permitted in a home business type application. I'm sure he would consider not putting a sign out front if the board so decides. We could request this be a, considered as a home business. We would meet some of the other criteria. Unfortunately, he would not be able to hire an employee unless there is a forgiveness for that. So, he, he assured me he wants to do whatever it takes to make his retirement happen. And so, he's very flexible. If there's some engineering requirements as far as access in and out of the property with a better line of sight, cutting down some bushes perhaps, perhaps regrading some of his front lawn into a slowdown lane, I'm sure he would consider that. We would also consider defining this as a home business, but again, we would not be able to bring in a, an employee.
So, I'll just give an opinion for the board to, to consider. Based on the testimony, listening to Mr. Hill, listening to the testimony from an engineering perspective, it would be my recommendation that the board consider this, in fact, a home-based business with waivers, variances requested from that conditional use, rather than a second principal use on the site. That would also give more control for the board in the future, because if the board should look favorably upon the applicant's request, even with whatever conditions you would, you would impose, it would be partic, variances of any sort run with the land. So, it would be particular to the home-based business as described, but if you grant a D1 variance for a, for the, come on.
Roadside retail.
For the roadside retail sales, that's what it is. And if somebody else would come along and have a, you know, with this structure that they're asking for as an example, want a second roadside retail sale, something completely different, potentially even more intense, it would be much more difficult for the zoning officer to deny that request. So, I think the board is, respectfully, I believe that the board is better protected if it would consider this a home-based business with a request of waivers. And I see you shaking your head, yes. Do you assent to that review in that context?
Yes, I, I have permission to agree to that, yes. Mr. Knowles will certainly testify.
But to help, to help guide us a little bit more on that, Mr. Gardner. So, as I'm looking at Mr. Peters' letter, and perhaps Mr. Jones, you can, you can help guide us as well. Are, are we then saying that the criteria that's listed on page three of Mr. Peters' letter, where he's referring to it as a home occupation, are now in play or not? Because we're calling it a home-based business? Is that the same as a home occupation?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think basically what's happening is you're going to call it a home occupation, and then you're just going to have conditions to that home occupation, which, to make life easy, you could take all the conditions from the home occupation and then sort of eliminate the ones that you think you want to waive to then permit him to do that, right? So, for example, you can't have any employees. If you want to allow him to have one employee, then that wouldn't be a condition under your resolution. But it's in essence a, I'll defer to Sean, but I would think that it would still be a D variance.
Oh, it is a D variance.
Yeah, yeah. It would still be the D1, but then the new use is whatever you want to call it.
But you're dealing with conditional use standards as opposed to a second principal use.
Right. And then you attach whatever conditions those are that you want.
Yeah.
And I'm sure everyone's on the same page. Well, I'm not sure, but the condition, the list of conditions are just for reference purposes. The FA6 zone doesn't even permit the home occupation as a conditional use, but just as a reference, correct?
Correct. That's why it's still a D1.
When you said it, I was like, oh.
I jumped ahead. You're right. I, but we're on the same page. That way, I think that it's much easier criterion. You're basically, he's now seeking a D1 variance to permit a home-based occupation. The art, the planning argument from the applicant's perspective is you have an existing, you have an existing or conditional use ordinance. It's not permitted at all in this zone. We utilize that as the criterion to provide conditions for what we're asking for.
Yes, we would like to revise our, our D1 variance to be for a home occupation, and we would ask for a variance for permission to bring in one employee. That would be part-time employee, and that would be as a mentorship to Mr. Knowles. We would also request a variance for a small shingle out front, and I believe we meet all of the criteria. A sign, a small sign.
Kevin, estimate as the size of the, there you go. Estimate as the size of the sign?
We're working on that. Two foot by three foot.
It says somebody can get a phone number and call.
I would think two foot by three foot.
He's looking it up. Oh, I thought you were. What size, what's...
Through the chair. Jeff, what is the normal, what is the ordinance for signage before we have to...
That big. Two, two foot by three. I would, I would defer to that two foot by three foot sign, size. No taller than, no taller than eight foot height.
According to Mr. Peters' letter on page three, I don't know if this is correct. It's subparagraph D. It says there's no external display of goods or any outdoor activity or advertising on the premises other than a non-illuminated identification sign not to exceed 150 square 150 square inches.
That would be 10 inches by 15 inches, which would cause a lot of accidents if people try to read it.
Yes, it would.
So, we would request a variance...
So, that's why he's asking for...
For a two-foot...
For a waiver.
A waiver.
So, so, Mr. Betz, do you or does your client have an ability right now to walk through Mr. Peters' letter, items A through L, and make a proposal on each one?
Yes. On Mr. Peters' letter, page three, item A, there shall be no employees. We would request a waiver of that requirement.
With one employee?
One employee, part-time. Just checking with the applicant.
I could, I'm not sure what will...
I could, I'm not sure what will happen here. I could continue going solo if that's all that's allowed of me. Part of why I'm hearing here is to determine what would be allowed of me. So, if I have the opportunity to have a student employee, then that's always been something that I've wanted to do. It's been difficult in the past?
I, I think, I think things have been bouncing around so much. Why don't you just go through it, ask the waivers? The board can then speak, ask questions, you can hear from the public. And then if you have to give something up, you can discuss it.
Certainly. Item B, occupation shall not exceed 50% of the gross first floor of the dwelling. We're proposing a separate building for the occupation. The occupation will be conducted entirely within the accessory building. We are requesting a waiver of D, which states that there are no external display of signs exceeding 150 inch, square inches. We would request a waiver of that for a 24 by 36 sign.
You want a display, are you asking to display goods?
Yes, we are asking for a display of goods. Perhaps a picnic table. Again, I don't believe it's an important point to Mr. Knowles, but we would ask for that. No noise will be audible to adjacent property owners. I testify to that effect, that the building will be insulated for weather reasons, if nothing else, but also for noise and that there's a 25-foot natural buffer to the nearest property one. The occupation shall not adversely affect adjacent property owners or interfere with their quiet enjoyment. I think that's Mr. Knowles' intent. There shall be no internal or external alterations to the dwelling unit. That's not apropos, we're going to be proposing in addition an accessory building, where all work will be done inside that building alone. No, item H, no use shall involve construction features, use of electrical mechanical equipment that would change the fire rating of the structure. My understanding, not being a fire marshal, but that a wood shop does not really affect the fire rating of the structure. It will be sheetrocked, of course, insulated and sheetrocked, which would provide the fire rating. I, no use shall be permitted which exceeds the maximum number of occupants. We're going to have two occupants, perhaps a few clients. I can't see occupancy be more than six in a 50 by 50 building. There will be no on-street parking to address item J. K, there will be no firearms involved. L, there will be only one home occupation that we're requesting. That would be for the woodworking shop. And I believe that goes through Mr. Peters' list. So, that would be three waivers, one for the size of a sign out front, one for the use of one employee, a paid employee, and the third one would be for being able to put a birdhouse or something out front for sale kind of item on a picnic table.
Your, your client has a beautiful box of some sort on the table that he's held up as an example of his work. And it raises a question in my mind. I don't see anything in here in terms of the type of equipment that he's going to have that addresses the need for, for some type of evacuation or, or, or system that's going to deal with highly volatile organics or shellac or turpentine or cleaners or whatnot. That, that I'm looking at, that's just not wood. That's a finely finished piece of artwork that looks like it's been, you know, stained and maybe polyurethaned and rubbed. It's gorgeous, but that just begs further questions in my mind as to what's going on inside that 2,500-square-foot structure. And then that again raises some more concerns regarding the noise and the fire rating, et cetera. Can, can you address some of those concerns?
Mr. Knowles, would you address how you deal with your paints and your volatiles in your shop?
Well, for starters, I have got about 35 years of experience. Never any fires, I got all my fingers. Safety is in the head, period. Courtesy as well to neighbors, et cetera, as well is something to be practiced. I've, in terms of volatile compounds, I've moved largely to waterborne finishes, which the entire industry has largely moved that way. I do have occasional use of other sorts of paint thinner, for example. I mean, everybody uses paint thinner. I don't use a lot of it. I don't use a lot of anything, really. It's, it's a pretty small consumption of all materials. But regarding fire safety, again, it's, safety is in an individual's sensibilities about how they go about their business. That said, I try and practice industry standard sensibilities.
But we don't know what those are, respectfully. So, in terms of what you'll have inside your shop, is, is there a separate dedicated booth where you'll do this? Or you just do it right on your table, right, right inside the open space of 2,500 square feet? You just go get your stuff and you just do it without any type of ventilation equipment, without any type of safety equipment, without fire extinguishers, without, without anything? I don't know, but I'm looking for that answer from you as to how you assure the safety of that workspace. I don't know.
Can I?
Yes.
Can we, can we require, can we require this, this building to be inspected by the fire inspectors on an annual basis?
As a condition of approval, absolutely.
I mean, what, you okay with that? Of course.
How did Montclair, you had an office in Montclair, business?
Well, that's a, that's a good question because I went through this exact same process in my current building, which I've been in for 21 years now. The neighborhood is more condensed. It's buried use in the neighborhood. But I have properly set up dust extraction to all the machines. I won't run a machine without proper dust extraction.
Well, that's what we wanted you to testify to, with something like this coming to Jackson, another 50 by 50 building. Of those issues that we're bringing up now that should have been prepared so we can see it. That's what the chairman of the plant said. We don't see that.
How do you mean see it?
If I may, I think the issue is, I think, speak on behalf of the board. We feel like, the board, I think, feels like we're pulling out information that the board would feel would be self-evident in terms of what your testimony ought to be. You know, we're trying to help as much as we can, but we're pulling information out. So, for instance, you just testified, chairman touched on it. Vice chairman got you to articulate that you're going to have a dust extraction system. How do you handle, how do you store turpentine, shellac? Is it, is it separated? For instance, I'm going to use an example that may not be applicable, but I'm a layperson also in this regard, so I'll try to assist. If folks use oil, right? Oil has to be, if you're changing oil in a car, it has to go into a separate can or something, and then you have to set up a system to remove it properly. If this was a home-based business to be a one-car, one-stop mechanic shop, trying to do the analogy, one of the questions the board would ask, how, how do you get rid of oil when you change the oil? Similarly, I think the board is asking that you use shellac, turpentine, other chemicals in terms of doing the finish work for the wood. Is this the type of business, based on all the experience that you have, that that, that type of stuff has to be segregated? Do you need a license? We're trying to understand, the board is trying to understand those kind of questions.
Exactly. Thank you very much for clearing that up.
Of, of course, these materials need to be managed properly. Any volatile products typically go into a metal cabinet, for example.
Excuse me, how many gallons of volatiles would you consider? I'm not talking the, the water-based products, but your, your hydrocarbon-based products? How many gallons are we talking about, how many cans or jars?
I probably have three or four gallons of product at a time. Mostly paint thinner, occasionally lacquer thinner for, for certain cleaning. But I would say that standard paint thinner is mostly what I may have. But I have very little of the rest of it. As I said, there's a lot of waterborne products currently that are pretty much dominating the market. So, I try and use those products as much as I can now.
And you said the volatile materials are going to be in a metal cabinet?
That's where they typically go.
And when you're using those volatile materials, there's a vapor that goes in the air. What do you do to protect yourself, your prospective apprentice, possible flame problems? What do you do to ventilate the air?
Well, with the limited use of those products, I, I do have an exhaust fan in my current shop. Actually have two. One goes through the side wall and another one goes through the roof. But they are, I mean, I, where I am now, I just can't, I can't have any volume of that kind of product because, because of the nature of the neighborhood.
You're, you're proposing an exhaust fan with the new building?
Absolutely.
With a flame-proof motor operating the fan?
Absolutely.
And that would be used at all times when you're using volatile materials?
Correct. I don't like breathing those products.
And regarding sawdust, sawdust is also a health hazard and potentially explosive material, flammable material. You said that you have collectors on all your machines, which is a vacuum?
Yes, I will not run a machine without a vacuum on it. And yes, they, if they're not set up properly or grounded properly, they can be hazard.
And what happens to the sawdust after the machine collects it?
Some, sometimes it can be composted, but currently, and again, I don't have a lot of volume. I have a small container that gets picked up.
So, it's collected in bags and then you either compost it or?
That is, in fact, really my only by-product. Everything else, my use of materials and the volatile products that we're talking about is so efficient that I've got very little waste in my operation.
All right. Now, raw materials that you bring in, be it paints or lumber, whatever your raw materials are, or equipment and tools, is that something that potentially is coming in by UPS every week? Or are you going to, how are you going to handle materials coming in and how often do you expect it to come in?
I, currently, I get very little traffic. I don't really expect that to change. UPS is at our house every day now, anyway. UPS is there all the time. I can pick up much of my materials. Most projects have got one or two deliveries or product that I will pick up that requires one or two trips on my part.
With the, the issue of UPS trucks coming and going, do you anticipate shipping finished products very often?
At present, no. Though one of my options that I've considered for moving forward with my life here, transitioning, would be an internet access to my products.
So, what kind of volume would that relate to as far as you shipping out? Would you be having a truck come every day to pick up your products or once a week?
Very unlikely, very unlikely.
Very unlikely, I'm sorry.
That it would be every day. I don't anticipate that. I, I could also deliver my product to UPS. If that were, if that were helpful.
And how many hours a week do you, could you guesstimate you would actually be doing this occupancy?
Not more than 40.
Not more than 40?
No, no way.
I'm, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, you know, I would like to see Glenn transition into retirement, and that's what this is about. So, he's talking not less than 40, and I'm going to push him to do a lot less than that because, you know, the, I'm sorry, not more than that. He needs to understand, you know, that retirement is retirement, and he knows that. And this type of work that he's been used to doing was on a much larger scale. Now, it's smaller stuff, you know, things that he needs to be able to concentrate on, things like this. So, as far as traffic and that kind of thing and him working 40 hours, I'm not having it. He's, he needs to slow down. But I do think that this is a beautiful product. This is just one piece of product that he does do. And it would be a shame to lose, you know, this type of talent and not be able to grow it, especially in an area like Jackson, and be able to show a younger set of people what it's like to work with hand tools and, you know, do something like this. It's just beautiful stuff, so, but he needs to retire.
In, in terms of the not more than 40 hours in a week, are there timeframes per day that you're talking about where the machines won't be on and you won't be working so that your neighbors don't have to be concerned about? Because right now, I have no idea if these things make noise or not. So, I'm going to assume they do, in which case, well, that's going to be my assumption for the purpose of the question. And so, I want to know the earliest that you would be in there turning on machines and the latest those machines would be on, and how many days a week?
I would say nine to three or four-ish. Weekends, I generally, currently, I do not work weekends in terms of the decibels from these machines. I've got a lot of experience with this, again, in a very tight neighborhood. And the methods that I have used, which in part include machines that they're not that loud. And particularly if I have my space closed up because it can be open, there's a, there's an overhead door. And if my instincts tell me to close the door for soundproofing, then I do that. But I've, I've never had a complaint in 20 years. I consider myself a courteous, good neighbor.
Mr. Miskovich, do you have any? No, I'm sorry. Mike, there you go, thank you.
I've been listening.
Application for?
Well, I have not seen this. I've been listening to the board's questions, listening to the testimony, and listening to the applicant. I think that going to a home-based operation is probably better for the board because that controls the amount of activity that could be here. If you grant it to the prior one that they're a roadside business, you're right. In the future, if these. In the future, if these sawdust, you get a 2,500-square-foot building that now could be used almost anything. So I think this controls it somewhat. But there's questions raised because now we have a plan with no dimensions other than the building, 50 by 50. We heard about having a possible employee, which was a student, but now it's an employee. And where are they gonna park and how do you park them? You may have visitors coming in. Do we need a parking space? How are we gonna park them? We need some dimensions on that. So at least it complies with the parking stall width or size, the number, and then the driveway aisles. We've gotta talk about deliveries. You may pick up material, but you may have material brought in. You're talking about wood, different materials. I don't know if we're... What I've been hearing, you pick up, you may have UPS deliveries, you may have whatever. How do they come in and how they turn around and whether they drop off, how do they get out? I'm gonna call trash part of it. You tell you have the sawdust collection, which is good. You have to get rid of that sawdust. You have trash come in to pick that up or do you take it out? Is that a private hauler or is it part of your house? But then you have wood byproducts. I'm sure you've got wood chips, you've got odd pieces that are somehow disposed of that you don't need. How is that gonna be handled? And to the board's question with volatiles, if you have to get rid of that material, how is that disposed of? Those are the questions we're looking at on that aspect. Do I need a... Like if you go to garage, oil is picked up once a month or whatever and they recycle it out. Is that something that in your business with thinners, that, how does that get recycled and how does it get removed? So there's issues as far as parking. Dimensions on the plan at least to show that there's adequate area for that. And if I have a delivery coming in, UPS or FedEx-type truck, whether to drop off or to pick up something for shipping, how do they access and turn around? Those are questions that go to a site plan aspect. And I haven't heard anything particulars about, other than might be one employee, maybe we have one visitor or whatever. So I think the board needs to see some more detail on that or at least the mentioning. So I don't know if you can address some of that as...
I can address all of that.
Okay.
Where would you like me to start?
Talking about the... We'll go to the last thing first. You have sawdust that you collect?
That's correct.
You have wood byproducts, scrap woods, pieces like that left over? And is that disposed of and how?
As well, I mean, in terms of the wood byproducts, the solid wood byproducts, I have a wood stove. And I can't... I've got no issue with that. It all goes right into the wood stove.
A wood stove in your workshop?
No. No. It goes into the, it gets taken to our home and generally is kindling.
So and how do you, and then the dispose of your sawdust? You say you may put in a bag and it's taken out for trash pickup or it's composting? The sawdust?
Well, I have composted in the past, but currently I have a small container for all my waste, which is very little.
But I think the question is, okay, you have that, it's now trash. Is that put out curbside for pickup? I don't know if it's private hauler or municipal trash pickup?
It's, it's, it is a private. We currently have a private hauler.
Out to the curb and they pick up?
Yeah, and I could, I could, I could fit my waste. We...
The question is, you have the trash, you put it out curbside and it's picked up just like a normal trash pickup for the house?
Correct.
Okay.
As I see it, that will be a non-issue.
And as far as your paint thinners and everything, is any excess unused? Rags are all spoiled. Is that disposed of? I know you put it in, use the rags, you put them in some kind of metal container. And do you get rid of that at some point?
They, I do not use that method. When I have volatile rags, which is rare, I hang them and dry them and then I throw them out. Because you put them in water and it just makes a mess. It's just completely unnecessary. So they get hung, they dry, and then they get discarded.
And environmentally, that's an accepted method of disposing?
It is. It is.
We're talking about this building, and this is probably in Evans area. It will be heated?
Of course.
Electric or gas or...
There's gas at the street, which we intend on bringing in.
So you're bringing in gas, probably electric?
The electric is in the current garage.
And that'll be satisfactory for the building?
Yes, it will.
Or increased service? Will you have a bathroom or any toilet facilities or water, that you bring water in?
I don't believe I'm gonna make that effort. I'm just gonna use the bathroom and the water in the existing dwelling.
Well, I don't know if it's a separate building and home-based, this is probably Evans area, whether that needs a separate, you know, bathroom-type area, especially if you may have an employee. I don't know if that triggers that type of activity. But I guess since you're looking for the D-variants, it's a matter of maybe bringing water in for that. That's something you could address the board with. But I'll defer that part of it. And I think we need to know how many parking spaces we may really need and whether you can testify that we have, you can provide X number of 9 by 18 plus the 24-foot aisle for pulling, backing out. I'm not looking at surface area now as far as the material. But is there width to provide parking and turnaround area and have some room for a delivery truck that may come in? Box trucks, small, to be able to turn around?
You presently said you have quite a few deliveries.
We do and if I, if I could say, all the UPS, et cetera, drivers are very good at turning around in our driveway and the driveway is very agreeable to performing a K-turn to...
That's okay. I guess it was whether there was any dimension and maybe that should be put on the drawing so we have some dimensions to show that.
I was just gonna say that the existing driveway in front of the existing garage, auxiliary building garage, is approximately 22 feet wide.
Okay.
Wide enough for two vehicles. There is room at the elbow of that accessory driveway for a turnaround. We can certainly put markings there if the board sees it necessary to mark where parking would be. And if need be, we can enlarge that driveway somewhat at the turn there to make it a little easier for...
So is your testimony, you said you would have two parking spaces that would be directly in front of the garage?
Yes.
And then backing out to make the K-turn exit?
Yes, as the driveway is sized right now, if I were in front of the existing garage, I can back out toward the 90-degree elbow and at that point I can make a K-turn, in essence, start pulling forward, turning left and then getting onto the main driveway where I would make a left and get onto...
And a delivery UPS-type truck would pull into the main driveway off Thomas River Road? Pull in and then probably K-turn into that driveway towards the garage or back out into that and make the K-turn in the existing driveways?
Yeah, the driveway functions very well and I would say that it is the most highly functioning driveway in the neighborhood, really.
So there's no maneuvering out onto the roadway? Everything can be contained on the property?
Yes.
Okay.
The main driveway is roughly 25 feet wide.
Okay.
Very wide driveway to the main house.
And so the 25 does comply with driveway width dimensions even for a commercial resident? So that's enough for two-way traffic? I would imagine the two spaces in front of the garage would be either for an employee or a visitor because I've assumed your car is parked at the house?
Yes.
And the only way in or out of the building is through the garage?
My plan is to put a pair of sliding doors at the back of the garage going into the new space. That's what I'm figuring now.
Right. I would defer, I guess, to the building department whether it needs to be another exit doorway on the building, an emergency-type of exit, that's all.
Actually, I intend on that as well.
I don't think I have anything further right now.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Miskovich. Board members, any other questions from the board? Mr. Hurley?
The only concerns I really have with this application, I shouldn't say only, there are just a couple. My first reaction when I read the application, I read the reports that were filed, that it's probably more like a home occupation than it is a new principal use to the property, separate and distinct. And I think our attorney already pointed out that you can only have one principal use on a lot. You'd need a variance for that. But the home occupation would kind of work. And everything I've heard, I'm kind of satisfied with considering it a, for myself, a home occupation. The problems that I have with the home occupation, however, one of which is noise and you've addressed that and you indicated that you'd be willing to operate from 9 to 3 and probably not working on weekends and that's perfectly satisfactory to me.
I'd also like to add to that that these pole barns have very... It's not a three-and-a-half-inch wall. They are much greater than that. So I can get more insulation and if I determine it, or we were to determine that, to be required. So I'm not, I'm not concerned about noise. Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry that you brought up pole barn because that was my next question. I agree with the chairman that this is kind of a massive structure for that area. And it would appear to me, looking at the documents that have been submitted, it looks like a very industrial type of use in a residential type of area. Is there anything you can do to make it fit in more with surrounding buildings?
Well, there's a lot of these pole barns. I see them all over the place. And this location on the site remarkably, the only people that are really gonna be able to see it are us. And honestly, I'm not looking forward to it. I'm not looking forward to the site of a building. But we're the only ones that can see it. You won't be able to see it from the street. You can't see it from the south property because there's a double row of mature white pines that cover that view. The back is entirely wooded.
Right. I understand that. The other concerns that I had and why I like the concept of trying analyzing it as a home occupation is because if it's granted, we can control that use. And it will always be a woodworking shop on a homeowner-type of operation. My other concern is that we have definitions of homeownership. I don't want to start any trouble here. Do you own the property? What would Mr. Knowles, would he be a tenant?
Get married?
That's fine. Okay.
If that's what you wanted to know, so he's gonna be a property owner with me? I guess, I don't know if that answered your question.
No, you've answered the question. I guess I don't want to get anybody into trouble here.
You want me to make sure that he's been married?
No, no, no. My concern is that it has to be a family member because if Mr. Knowles and you move and it's restricted to ownership, we wanna make sure, I would wanna make sure, that it's understood that it's restricted to a family member as a resident and at home. I made the mistake a long time ago and I won't tell you why. I asked, I asked some lady about her husband and she said, "He passed away." So my normal reaction was, "I'm sorry." Her response was, "I'm not." So I don't, I know how to deal with these questions all the time. I'm very careful, but I just wanted to make sure that we're doing something in this ordinance that if Mr. Knowles and you move out, that the use is controlled.
I understand. I think that, you know, I'm a lifelong Jackson person. I've been here. I raised my family here. I love Jackson. I have no intention of leaving this area. If something were to happen to us, you know, in my will, it's being left to my kids who also love Jackson. So I don't see that as being necessarily an issue.
Too much information for me. My problem is the size, quite frankly. I think the chairman raised that too. My wife and I downsized to a home now and your... The size of this project is probably bigger than my house. And it's only myself and my wife, so it's not a problem. But my point is, it is, it is kind of massive-looking and it does have this industrial type of look. So long as, I'd be concerned if you agree to operations 3, 9 to 3, no weekends, that's fine. Because you're gonna have grinders there, you are gonna have, you'll have drills, you've gotta have sanders. You have to have all of these things. And trust me, I have, I have neighbors that still think, you know, they're 55 and older. They still think they can build cars, you know, and they can do it in their garage. You can hear that a long distance with the garage doors closed. So I'm concerned about the noise. But you've answered my concerns in that regard. Thank you.
I would like to just bring up one issue as we still need to talk about the bulk variants. I don't want to lose sight of that. And then also, I'm going to ask Jeff, right? Yes, I'm gonna ask Jeff a question. Generally speaking, I was looking in the code and I couldn't find it, but generally speaking, if this were, say, a single-family home, it would be site plan exempt? Being, if this were a, being constructed as a single-family home on a vacant lot, it would be site plan exempt? Being that it is an accessory building that is over the 2,000-square-foot limit for a minor site plan, would this not in fact be resubmitted as a site plan? Because right now he is just asking for a D1 variance.
And a C-variant.
And, right. But they are not asking for site plan exemption or anything else?
To answer the first part of your question, which, if you're building a home, it wouldn't require a site plan, it would be a...
Building permit.
Right.
Right.
Or zoning permit or whatever it is. I wouldn't call this a minor, I wouldn't call, I wouldn't call this a need for a minor site plan. Am I missing something?
I guess, well, I mean, per your minor site plan definition, it would be anything under 2,000 square feet and this is over. So I mean, technically, based on that definition alone, it's actually a major site plan to build a 2,500-square-foot building. But if this were a pure residential use, it would just be a garage, which would be a building permit. Would we consider this separate or different, being that it's a separate building solely for the purpose of having this proposed home occupation?
I'm still sticking with the home occupation concept. I'm not, I, if you want me to go through the book and...
No, no, it's a question that I'm posing from a legal standpoint.
So let me ask it or articulate it when I think it's a different way. Are you looking at the technical, the technical definition of what type of building triggers the need for a site plan? Correct, right?
If this were a commercial building?
No, no, no. I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be the lawyer. It's very important for you to answer the question.
Correct.
Correct. So, so, I lost my train of thought. So, yes, correct. It technically triggers it. So because they're asking, as I understand it, because they're asking for this D1 variance, utilizing the home-based business occupation ordinance as the basis to request waivers from that, they are, I am certain, asking, and what Mr. Reporo is basically saying, they are asking for a waiver of that requirement because the only improvement, from their perspective, the only improvement that they're making is this building. So what, what someone's question was earlier, so that's the technical place to answer to your question. Nevertheless, one of the board members or someone brought... Nevertheless, one of the board members, or someone brought up the fact that should there be a requirement that, as a condition of the approval of the use variance, that they submit a site plan, where at least there's been, you haven't been here, but members of the board will recognize that in certain circumstances, they've required at least a variance plan that lays out some of the parking stall issues that Mr. Miskovich has provided for some parking, really maybe where the sign is. So because this is a, is variance relief, the board has the opportunity to impose reasonable conditions upon the, any approval, should the board approve it even in concept. For instance, the board could say, there's been two or three members talking about the size of the building, the industrial look of it, at least as submitted. In fact, the applicant, the user's own testimony said, while it's screened from other folks in the street, he doesn't even really want to look at it. The board could certainly condition approval on the submission of at least some type of architectural rendering or material use to make certain, as an example, that despite the scale of the building, its look is more, has a more residential feel to it, for lack of a better term. That's a reasonable condition when you're seeking a use variance. Now, does that get the kind of your, that's how I would handle it. That's my recommendation to the board, is how I would handle that, based on the app, on the application. Now, I'm going to complicate it further, I apologize, but I kind of asked the question. Did this, since this is in the Pinelands, does this trigger any Pineland requirements, certificate of filings?
Sean, this is Evan. They already have a certificate of filing for this project.
They did?
They do, yeah. It's about a year ago.
So the board shouldn't be concerned about that, that this is Pineland? Though, Evan, can you maybe articulate even for new members of the board, even with the certificate of filing, if there's certain changes or impositions, do they have to go back to the Pinelands as a condition of approval?
Well, ultimately, the boards, the boards' action gets published, of which a copy goes to the Pinelands. And the Pinelands just make sure ultimately that it's consistent with the original certificate of filing. In reviewing their certificate of filing, it's consistent with what they're proposing here. There's no changes to that. You know, I want to go back to a couple, the comment about a site plan, and then what constitutes a site plan. This is a home, this is being treated as a home occupation. Home occupations aren't required to create a formal site plan application or submit it. However, the board in the past, if they felt that the variance plan that accompanies the application needs additional information included within it, the board has asked for it. So what I've heard people, what I've heard Frank and others talk about is delineating parking stalls on the plans, identifying which utilities are going to be utilized. It's always a good idea to put the hours of operation on the plan as well, just so it's on a document more realized. The other thing I would suggest is a building this size, typically, we do it for garages all the time, which, this sounds like similar construction, would be installing drywells for the for the capture of stormwater runoff from the roof. And then also talk about any, do you have any outdoor, any outdoor lighting proposed? Is there any outdoor lighting proposed on the building?
I'm sure as required or as needed, there would be lighting.
But no, not like, not for advertising purposes, just for security above doors and such, correct?
Correct, sensible lighting, yes.
Okay, all right, so I would go along as, and then, look, the testimony that the applicant talked about regarding the operations of his business, I do a lot of woodworking myself in a much smaller space, probably much smaller tools, but at the same time, everything he indicated is consistent with what woodworking is. Nothing jumped out at me as being different.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Mr. Hurley?
Yep.
Mr. Beattie?
Mr. Hill, I'm looking at the certificate of filing for Pinelands. It says, unless I haven't, unless there's an update. It says, "The construction of a 2,160-square-foot building and the establishment of a home occupation."
Correct.
This is 2,500 square feet. Is that going to be affected?
Just bear with me a minute. Okay, so the garage, the garage got a little bit bigger once the plan was created, it looks like. It shouldn't have any material effect on it. 840 square feet is, what, 20 by, yeah, 840 square feet's not that large.
Okay, the other question was the garage. I've read in the papers, I think what Mr. Knowles had submitted as responses to your reports, was that the garage was non-conforming, but then it got approved. Do we have any background on that? I hope we're not looking at enlargement of a non-conforming use. Or structure.
It's my understanding you have a variance for the garage. Could you expand on that for the board?
I'm going to have to put my thinking cap back on, but we did receive all the permits and all the variances that we needed to construct the existing garage. So I don't know exactly what permits. We ended up getting the permits, we submitted them through Mr. Peppero's office at the time. I don't remember all the specifics truthfully.
All the need for a variance for the garage?
We ended up going through, yeah. I don't know if we needed a variance, though. I think we just submitted for the permit.
Yeah, I don't believe there was a variance.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Any other questions from the board? Oh, Mr. Burrell, yes.
I looked at the property from the road, and I have to agree with the chairman, that is one busy road, Combs River Road, for when I was out there looking at it. Will you have to, I have to ask Mr. Betts, this is a planning question. Do you have to remove any trees to make room for the new proposed building behind the existing garage?
A current layer, there's a shed, which is outlined in very small, it almost looks like text-only, the shed is so small. So that's basically a small area of field with little, small shrubs, whatnot. So no, no trees of any size, and in fact, that shed's going to be removed in order to make space for the new building.
Will you have to move the existing fence? That's in the back of the property?
No.
I have another question, regarding to storing equipment in the proposed building. And I guess I can also direct this to the applicant as well. Will there be any other kind of equipment stored in the building, not related to your woodworking business?
The new structure? No.
Yeah.
Not likely. The existing garage will continue to perform as it is, which is kind of typical home use stuff. Occasionally, when it snows, I'll even put a car in there.
Will the building be closed when woodworking is done? Because I know there's concern that was expressed about the noise and if possible, impact on the surrounding properties and neighbors.
I'm sorry, will it be closed when the woodworking is done?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. It'll be a secure structure.
All right, thank you.
You have to use the mic.
I'm sorry. We've spoken directly to our neighbors, and I'm confident that they understand what we're trying to do, and they know about the noise, that they're, you know, it's going to be minimal.
Are you proposing windows on the south side of the building, which would be closest to the property line?
I am certainly intending on having some glass, some windows in the building. All that has not been, I mean, there's a lot to be laid out. But I was, in fact, waiting for this to become more of a realistic possibility before I went to work on the lengthy layout of this space to suit my purposes.
Mr. Knowles?
Yes, sir.
Is there any way that you can make that building smaller and still accomplish what it is you wish to do?
Certainly, practically speaking, I would consider the space to be comparable to what I'm in now, which I consider to be small.
Stay with that for a second. So the space you're in now, which you consider to be small, does the space you're in now have the same type of equipment in it that you're proposing to have in the place that you're proposing?
It does.
So it's same say, right?
And they're all, it's all very fundamental, basic woodworking equipment that any homeowner might have.
Let me stay with, well, you're a craftsman, you're way beyond a homeowner in my mind. You're a professional craftsman. The quantity of work that you're doing in your current location, I'm going to, I'm going to stretch, I'm going to reach for a way of quantifying it. Do you make one piece a week, two pieces a week, three pieces a week? Do you farm out whatever you do to somebody else to do a part of it, then does it come back to you to assemble? Or are you, from soup to nuts, you do everything. You get the wood in, it's fresh wood, you rip it, you sand it, you do everything to it, right to the finished product?
The latter is much closer to what I do. Occasionally, I will have somebody else make something for me, but it's rare as to how many pieces I do. I mean, currently, I have two or three clients a year. Often, they never come to my shop.
Are they individual clients or are they corporate clients?
I don't do commercial work, really. It's all, it's all residential.
And would you describe the type of pieces you make? I mean, I get an idea, that looks like, you know, a nice hand-rubbed oil storage box of some sort, maybe a foot by eight inches, but would you describe the other types of pieces that you make? What typically are you thinking, or you're going to propose, that you're going to make at your shop?
Currently, which as I stated, it's something I'm trying to transition out of, partly because I, you know, it's just something I have to be ready to transition away from. So this is an example of something I do in my spare time, pretty much for myself. I do have some very good photographs here. I don't know if, under the circumstances, you'd be willing, interested in
What are they photographs of?
They're photographs of my work. They're rather large. I do everything from libraries, kitchens, doors, a bit of windows, theater rooms, pretty much anything somebody's willing to hire me to do. I'll even paint for my better customers.
The, so, your testimony really is, is this 2,500-square-foot structure is really the minimum that you need to do what you want to do? Am I, I don't mean to mischaracterize your testimony, but that's what I'm hearing. Is that a fair conclusion?
It's, I would say it's pretty fair, and I've thought about a smaller space if it were absolutely necessary for some reason. But from my perspective on that property, I do not, we do not gain anything by making it smaller. My sense of space is quite good.
Well, I'm going to tip my head, I'm going to tip my hand a little bit to you, and perhaps your planner can maybe fill in a blank. I mean, right now, there's a concept, as board members, that we learn, and that is whether or not what you're proposing is particularly suited to your particular piece of property. And right now, I'm not thinking it is. It's too big. And what you're proposing, and Mr. Hurley hit the nail right on the head, it looks like an industrial complex. Looks like you're taking a residential area, and with this 2,500-square-foot building, you're turning it into an industrial zone. That's what it's going to look like. Regardless of what you're doing on the inside of it, that's what I see in my mind's eye when I'm hearing this. So that's why, one, I asked, can you reduce it? But if you can't, well, then, I'm thinking out loud again, well, maybe you can do something that would make that building look more residential. Something that, it would make it fit in with the other houses. I think it's called an architectural review. So if your application was received favorably by the board, the board might discuss, or might want to put on a condition to that, that whatever it is you build is going to have to be subject to a review for, from an architectural point of view, to make certain it fits and kind of conforms with the rest of the neighborhood. Is that something you'd be open to?
Well, of course. I don't, I don't really want something there that's unappealing to me, and if you explore the pole barns from Pioneer Pole Building, which I've gotten consultations on in pricing, et cetera, some of their stuff is really stunning and surprising, what they can do, how good-looking it is. I mean, it's, it's very, very good-looking.
Well, I'm glad to hear you say that. I mean, I'm not an architect, I don't think any of us are, but thinking out loud, you know, thinking about shingles, type of roof, you know, facade that fits in with the neighborhood, those types of aesthetics, for lack of a better word. So that if someone's going to see this structure from the street, you know, it's not going to be a shock and so inconsistent with the neighborhood, because that's another concept. You know, is it consistent with the neighborhood? And quite frankly, what you're currently proposing, it isn't. So maybe you can make it more consistent and make it fit. So that's just a thought. Or is that something that you would be open to as a condition?
Absolutely. I would note that one side of the building is facing all woods, another side of the building is facing all trees. I mean, I've looked at this, because in terms of putting windows in, there's going to be no light, because it's all woods, all trees, the third side is
Sir, I'm interrupting respectfully, but on purpose. You've heard the chairman make a suggestion.
Absolutely.
I understand, I think the board understands your points. But the suggestion from the chairman is that you're building a structure that's as large as many ranch houses in the municipality, and that regardless of where the orientation of the building is, it ought to look more like, as much like a residential building as possible. We'll leave it to, we'll leave it, the board, should it approve the application, would leave it to your own aesthetical aesthetics, and then argument, if the board approves this at all, as to what you, what you bring in. And if you bring in something that is a box except for one front, and you make your argument, the board will then at least have a picture of what the building actually is to look like.
It's critical to me that it looks good.
That wasn't actually your testimony before. So it's glad, I'm sure the board is glad to hear that now.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr.?
Janine Fritsch. I'm looking at these pole barns. Do you have room to turn them? I, I'm looking at these pole barns. Do you have room to turn them? So the, the doors, the garage doors would either be facing the woods, like you said, or the other direction? So they're not directly facing the road. Then you can have your windows that you talked about in the front to make it more aesthetically pleasing, really. Do you need the garage doors?
There will be no overhead door of any sort on the new structure. The access will be through the...
So these from this pole barn?
The front-facing part of the existing garage is gonna be the two-card door garage that's already there. So that's where the access is. So the front of the facing of the building that we're adding to is, already has garage doors on it. Does that make sense? I've got pictures of the garage if you wanna see it.
The, the proposed building will be attached to an existing garage and the proposed building will not have any garage doors to it.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I'm looking to put windows and certainly at least one additional pedestrian door and, at, at some location for, for safety. And I wanna get windows wherever I can make sense to, to get them in. But part of the challenge is, is that all the woods that, these will be facing each wall, so. The, the main view is actually from our backyard. That's, that's the broadest view of this. So from the pool, from the pool area is really the only place you're gonna get a good look at this building.
So you can't really see it from the street? You can't see it from the street?
I don't know. I mean, you can't. It's, realistically, it's not visible. That's one of the remarkable things.
Okay, thank you.
Yes? I have a concern. I agree with the chairman, the building is too big. And maybe you could consider 2,000 square. How's that fit? Can that get, should livestock have all your equipment functioning properly?
25 by 20 as an example. 25 foot by 20 feet would be. Or some variation of that rectangle.
I can't live with 25 by 20.
I'm sorry, my math was off.
Oh, it's something I'll have to consider.
Well, the question is, following Mr. Hurley's point, you know, you heard the engineer, but the board, given the fact that the certificate of filing has the specific square footage at the 2,100 plus or minus, you could certainly limit the size of the building to, you have a rational basis to determine that the size of the building matched the original certificate of file.
I, I, let me interject. I misspoke. They're suggesting 2,000 square feet or 2,100 square feet, which would be roughly 50 by 40.
Right. Where, where is this? Where's the, this, was there 2,100 square foot? I'm not sure where that came from, I'm just curious.
I believe that's your Pine Lands application.
Oh, I mean...
Well, so I can answer, let me answer the question. So we're looking at part of your app, thank, thank you, application. There's a certificate of filing dated September 13, 2019. It talks about the construction of a 2,100, 2,160 square foot building and the establishment of a home application. That's what appears to have been submitted to the Pine Lands. So my advice to the board, listening to some of the, to some of the concerns, I know that the applicant has asked now for 2,500 square foot addition to the existing garage, but the board has a rational basis to determine that the maximum size of the building be 2,160 square.
I'm not familiar with that. I know that, I'm not sure just where it is, but the, the application that we put forth was, I, I believe it was stated, a building not greater than 50 by 50. Partly because I knew I couldn't come back and ask for something bigger if that were approved.
Site, site plan is 2,500. So, oh, sorry, sorry. Under, yes, under 2,000 is a minor, is a minor, could be minor.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. Mr. Betts, anything further on the application?
Uh, if the board would like, we could discuss the C variants, or is that pretty much?
Yes, please.
Uh, as I mentioned earlier, and as we all know now, it's a, in the FA6 zone, a six-acre required zone. The existing property is .92 acres. And so as such, and again, the, the FA6 zone was imposed on the land after the house was built, of course. But as such, the house is non-complying with the lot area, .92 acres to six acres. The lot width exists at 200 feet. The lot width requirement is 250. That's non-conforming. The lot depth requirement is 500 feet, provided is 200 feet. The front yard setback for the residential home is 200 feet, required is 200 feet. The house's setting is 69 feet. And then the side, one of the side yard setbacks to the residential home, the requirement is 25 feet and it's at 14 feet. So clearly, the home and the appurtenance to the house are non-conforming to the zone. There's no, no question, no issue with that. The proposed addition does meet the requirements, the current FA6 requirements for side yard setback. And as we look at the drawing, you'll see that it's in the backyard. It meets the rear yard setback, it meets the side yard setback. It's in the rear. Mr. Peters did make the comment that the proposed building violates the front yard setback of 200 feet. So does the house. And so we're asking for a variance of the fact that the proposed building is within 200 feet of the road or front lot line, even though it's proposed to be in the backyard of the house.
Let me just go, and Mr. Proporo, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe, so I'm setting myself up to be told I'm incorrect. Is it, is it a true statement that the reason that this may be considered in the front yard setback is because it's, it's, the way it's being connected is forward of the, of the line of the, of the house? And if that's not the case, maybe someone from the board can explain where Mr. Peters' comment came from.
Uh, if I can interject, the existing garage that we are attaching to is 73 feet to, roughly to the east of the, of the lot line, whereas the house is 72 feet. So the existing garage is, does not violate the front of the house.
So is the reason of that it's, it's being connected to ends up being one building?
I can't tell you why it's being connected, but the front yard setback for the dwelling is 200 feet, which is being viol, which, which is in violation in and in itself. I'm not, I, I don't understand the question.
Just trying to
Well, as my read of Mr. Peters' review, he's saying that a variance is required because the proposed accessory building is 105 feet from the front lot, which he says puts it into the front yard.
And you agree with that? That's...
As defined by the zone, the FA6 zone of 200 feet is the front yard setback.
So I can at least speak to the content of the letter. I can't speak to how the zoning officer interprets. But I think it's coming from the accessory building section of the code, which says that an accessory building cannot be in the front yard. If our front yard is 200 square, 200 feet back, then the new building is in the front yard, as is the existing garage.
And that would be the variance we're looking for, the relief we're looking for. Correct, but the garage is not in the, is not in the front yard because it's not forward of the house.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
We're asking for the relief because it's mentioned in the review.
Sounds like it's, you're relevant then, correct? It sounds like relief is not needed because it is behind the front of the building.
Correct.
Yep.
But technically, because it's less than the 200 feet, okay.
Hence the variance.
Hence the variance.
We're trying to play it safe.
Anything further on those issues, Mr. Betts?
Uh, no, sir, unless the board has any more questions. I mean...
Board, any additional questions for Mr. Betts? Mr. Hurley, that's okay.
No, you can't, Mr. Hurley, I apologize, only because we're recording. I don't wanna lose anything.
I'm a little uncomfortable with designating that extension as a garage. Because, you know, it'll be listed as a garage for future use. And people can come in, they can store cars in it. It's a garage. Can we just designate it as something else? Proposed use, you know, proposed facility for a home occupation.
Sure. We can certainly change that on the ground.
I have a question. How is, how is the pole barn gonna be attached to the... We're gonna designate it something else, but the garage. How is that gonna be attached?
I'm not the engineer of record yet, and I may never be. But it would, I would assume, knowing my, my trade, it would be a self-sustaining building. They would not be physically attached. They would not share common foundations. There would be two totally separate foundations, two totally separate structures, and then cheek walls, basically architectural pieces that would cover up the small gap between the two.
Will the garage be heated also?
Uh, currently, it is not. I would say it could very well have a heat source installed.
What time, what type of utilities does the garage have now?
Uh, currently, only electric.
So you'll be putting heat in, you'll probably be putting heat in there then also?
Yes, that will likely be gas.
Okay. And you're still, you're still the position that you will not be putting any bathroom water facilities in either, either building?
That could be, although I would very much like to have those utilities in there.
Ask for, you can ask, you're here now.
Well, okay, the, the issue I have with it is it could be extremely costly.
But if you, you ask, if you put, put in form now, at least they're there.
Sure, that's agreeable to me.
Because if you, if you put them in, if you put them in later, then you gotta come back.
Understood. Well, I appreciate that suggestion.
All right, you have no other questions. Any other questions from the board? Nothing further? Mr. Betts, anything further?
No, sir.
All right.
Could I, could I just quick ask about, I just, I just, for the first time now, saw the Pine Lands document and the 2,160 square foot. That's the first time I'm seeing that. I don't know where that dimension came up, was come up with. My cover letter for this application states the 50 by 50. I don't know if you can comment on where, or if anybody can comment on where the 2,100-foot dimension came from.
Well, if, if your proposed building were 46 by 46, it would meet that requirement.
The 21, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess maybe the question is, is, given this as an official document, do we in fact become bound by that?
That's the problem of not having an attorney here. You know, no disrespect, but we don't represent you. My opinion was to the board, some members of the board had some concern over the size of the building. You heard the engineer articulate that, our engineer articulate the fact that he didn't really think it would be, you know, substantial issue. But I did opine to the board, and I'll repeat myself, that we have an official document. It's the applicant's document, the applicant is bound by it. So there certainly would be a rational basis for the board to restrict the building to the size of the submission. Because that's what, that's what's in front of you.
Okay, I understand it. That's the only official document we have, correct?
Yes.
Understood.
It doesn't prohibit you from asking for the, for the larger building. The board can art, you know, will debate that on its own.
Would you be amenable to a 46 by 46 building?
Um, I may have to consider that. That's, if that's what I'm allotted.
Well, that should be on the record now. If you are, that should be on the record now. Or if you're not, you should be on the record.
Yes, I'm open to that.
With that, any further questions from the board? I see no further questions. Oh, Mr. Miller?
Mr. Gertner, if he, if he does wanna go to 50 by 50, does he have to go back to Pine Lands for a waiver?
That would be internal with the engineer, it would be part of resolution compliance. It's a long-winded way to say, I'm not, I'm not certain. We heard the engineer articulate the fact that it, he didn't consider it material, but he may have to check that box. I'm pointing as if he's on the screen.
Well, presumably, we can check with them as to where that number came from.
Anything further from the board?
At this point, because you have to go to the public.
Mr. Betts, are you done? Your case has been submitted, so to speak?
It has. It has. I believe it would be in my client's interest to go with a 46 by 46 building, but I don't make that decision. But my client has said he would consider that.
With that, you rest?
I rest, yes.
You're good.
Thank you for your patience.
You can't really rest because he's not an attorney. He's not...
No rest allowed. All right, with that, I now open this case to the public. Does anyone from the public wish to be heard? Twelve hands, twelve folks are there, but no hands are up to be heard. Did I hear that correctly? Since there are no hands up and there's no one here that's coming forward, I then close the public session. Mr. Betts, any further comments? Any, would you make a closing comment? Or you plan to submit a closing comment, or do you submit?
I submit.
All right. Board, it's in our hands. Any thoughts, deliberations, emotion?
Liberation, through the chair, Steve Costanzo. There's been a lot of talk about, well, technically, where I think the board, we're on the same basis of, of the home base proposition as opposed to a retail, small retail roadside operation. I think it serves the applicant better in that, in that aspect. So I think we crossed that bridge. He's agreed to have, for lack of a better term, one employee, although his intent is actually an apprentice, but by law, he has to call him an employee. So he's agreeable to that. The signage, he, he's agreeable, two by three sign. But we've, we've heard testimony from numerous, from the applicant, as well as individuals that visit the site. Tom's River Road is a very busy road, very active road. His property is on a straightaway. My question is, is two by three large enough to capture My question is, is two by three large enough to capture what he wants, the attention he wants drawn to his property? I'm not here to deliberate on behalf of the applicant, but two by three, if he's acceptable to that, then clearly.
So can I stop you right there? I, I think that's a legitimate question to ask our traffic engineer. It's a health and safety concern. Again, it, it's more about the safety of folks looking for the site as opposed to an advertising sign.
In this case, is larger better?
Well, at this point, it's hard to say because we don't know what the message that's going to go on that sign. Is it going to just be like a street number on there? Is it going to have his name? Is it going to say whatever the business is? If this was, having said that, if we were considering this to be the retail type operation...
Can I interrupt right there? Because the applicant is stuck with his testimony. So the sole question before you, as the expert for the board, in my opinion, is what type of sign is this, would be sufficient to ensure the safety of the traveling public? Would just the number and the street address be sufficient with, with the business name or with woodworking? From, from, and maybe that's even, you're shaking your head, so maybe...
Well, I'm shaking my head because it's hard to say without knowing what's going to go on there. If I was going to put on 495, let's say that's the street number, I would say that's more than adequate to have that number on there. If I'm going to have Joe's, you know, Home Building Shop, whatever, it might be too many words to put on there. And I don't know if putting a street address and the street name is, if that's going to fit in a two by three. It may actually be in a one by four, because we're all, as I understand it, you're talking about six square feet. Unless it's just the specific dimensions of two foot high, three foot wide. I mean, we've had no testimony of what's going to go on there. And I don't know if this is going to have a separate address than the house. I don't know if the house has an address on it.
Well, it can have a separate address than the house because it's a home-based business.
That's true. But there's been no testimony as what is proposed to be on that sign. And maybe that's something that could be held off if the board decides to come back with either architecturals or some other site plan dimensions that we deal with the sign at that particular time. Give the applicant time to think about what he wants to put on there, and then I can give you a more specific answer, whether that's adequate or not.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Costanzo.
Okay. Steve, you're back.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chair. We then discussed, well, and the big elephant in the room, well, literally, is the size of the building. I, I haven't visited the site and, and can appreciate how the testimony was presented with regards to the coverage of the, the rear foliage, as well as the side foliage to the The applicant actually will see, he'll get the brunt of this, of the view of the building. He's also testified to the fact that he, you know, being a craftsman, he can appreciate the artistic endeavor that we've asked for with regards to facade of the building. I hope he takes us up on that. Also, understanding his craft and what room he does need, I think, although he is retiring and he's downsizing, a 5550 building is, is really the adequate safe space for his own operation, spacing the machinery away from each other. There's a safety issue within that that has to be considered also, was not discussed, but has to be addressed. I personally don't have a, a problem with the size of the building. Again, because of its location, we've heard no objections from any neighbors, and the fact that there is proper foliage that does cover that, that property. And with regards to C variance, pretty much is what it is out there. You know, that, that's, that's, that's a given. I don't think, my other notes, I think were pre, you know, we talked about the technical aspects of it, you know, the storm drainage, the runoffs, et cetera, that, that's all obviously going to comply the parking. So, but again, my big thing, my, my comment, I want to address to the board, be heard, was the, my, my not being upset with the size of the building and the fact that, I'm sure the, the applicant would certainly seek something aesthetic, because he himself has to look at it. As he laces to the pool drinking his martinis in retirement, he didn't want to look at the size of a barn, he'd rather look at something quite aesthetic, I would imagine.
Thank you. Anyone else from the board which to be heard?
You know, the issues, yes, no, with...
Have to turn it on now.
I think my voice is loud enough, I don't need a speaker. James had brought up the issue about sound, and that's important. I know you talked about insulation for the property owners next door, because these machines do get loud. So you said sheetrock and insulation, and that wasn't a problem. So I'd like that to be entered into one of the logical requests. That's it. Besides the size of the building that I strong on, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costanzo. Ms. McInerney, yes?
Kathy McInerney. I don't have a problem with the size of the building. I think that you, you know, calculated in what you need to safely maneuver around the equipment, and I don't have a problem with that at all. I think the applicant's been, I'm sorry. You've agreed to many, if not all, of the things that we've asked of you, and I think that if you would put a little more thought into making the building, the facade of it a little more aesthetically pleasing, I do not have a problem with the size of it because here it is, as, as Steve said. And again, he's been very accommodating with all of the issues that we've raised and asked of him. So I feel good about approving the application, and I don't have an issue with the size of the building.
Thank you. Mr. Marr?
I'd just like to say, the size of the building, I didn't really have a problem with. The applicant accepted to having the building inspected by, there was concern about flammables. Accepted to have it inspected by the fire marshals on an annual basis. And, I mean, I've, this pole barns, I don't see this pole barn being any bigger than what I've seen horse barns in that, in that area. So I really don't have a problem with the size.
Thank you. Mr. Rich, anything? Mr. Hurley?
I've already expressed my opinion relative to the size of the building and my concerns that it would, it would look like an industrial-type complex. However, I mean, I can live with the size that, that he wants. If the applicant is telling us, and he has, that this is the size he needs for all of the equipment that he would utilize, I could be more comfortable with the size if he dealt with the appearance of the building itself. If it looked more residential in character than it did a industrial-type character. I would be inclined to grant an approval, if the approval is for a D1, to permit a home occupation, which is not a permitted use in the zone. I'm uncomfortable with dealing with it as being a retail use, something of that nature, because we would, we would have better control of the use of this property as a home occupation. And there lies another problem. It is to be a home occupation, we would have to restrict it to members, family members of, of the primary residence. I have no problem including in that group. Same thing, we get a lot of these executive orders from, from the governor who says, you know, you don't have to social distance if you are, if you, if your family members are romantic partners. I know what romantic partners means, but, I mean, if we included something like that as part of a family group, we take care of the situation that we have here. I'm not trying to get anybody married here.
So, Mr. Hurley, I can say we can handle that, though, in this particular, I think we can handle it, though, in this particular case, because the applicant, there's actually dual applicants, so they're tied together by the application itself.
I'm talking about future purchasers.
Well, it, it would have to be...
For that use.
Yes, but it would have, what I'm saying is that they have to occupy the home. They have to be occupants of the, of the principal residence.
Okay, that's fine, too, allowing...
Well, let me start and stay with the, say, occupants or owners?
Well, they...
As long as they occupy the home, then they can, then they can operate the whole business. Is that your intent, Mr. Hurley?
Yeah, my concern is, the way the ordinance is written, it speaks to family members. That's, that's the way it's structured. So, you know, you may have a situation which you don't really have in quotes technically family members, but as I said, the governor likes romantic partners, and I can live with that one, too, as, to get around the issue. I'm more interested in being able, being able to control that, that, that use in the I'm satisfied, I'm concerned about noise. I'm satisfied with Mr. Knoll's answer that he would limit the operation from nine to three in the weekends. That's fine, since that's what he has suggested. I have no problem with that. My concerns would be if he was operating at, at 10 o'clock at night, that would be And that, that, I, I would, I'm concerned about the appearance. If he can deal with the appearance, I'm favorable. So long as it is, we're granting a D1 for myself, granting a D1 for a home occupation, which is a use not permitted in the zone.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley. Any other, Mr. Borelli? No?
Mr. Borelli, you have to, sorry.
The applicants and the planners, any questions or concerns, I have, have been satisfied. So, I guess, and also you would be, it sounds like you would be agreeable to having a residential kind of looking pole barn? Is that correct? Okay. So, okay, thank you, it sounds good to me.
Thank you, Mr. Borelli. Mr. Miller, any concerns, deliberations, thoughts?
All that I have is about the traffic. I live near that road, and I often travel it to our, my Tom's River store. And it's true that there's a lot of traffic before nine and a lot of traffic around four to five. The hours that he's going to be operating, I don't see traffic as a, as a major problem there.
I'd like, no, I'd like to put forth, I wouldn't say nomination, but it's not a nomination. I was going to put forth that we approve this application, signing it as a home occupation D1 request. The, I think we've beat to death pretty much what we've...
So if I can give it a shot?
You want to edify, please?
Well, at least give it a shot, that would be, that, that be permitted one employee, that it appears perhaps that you take our traffic engineer's advice, and as well as what I've heard, even though the applicant has agreed to make the, make the pole barn more aesthetically pleasing, that as a condition of approval, that he come back to approve administratively. The variance plan is suggested by the board engineer, that that variance plan, besides articulating parking and other provisions, as our professionals have indicated, show at least a side, a separate sketch of that proposed sign, and that he provide an architectural, at least rendering, even if it's a commercial, at least, even if he goes out to a company for the pole barn, that the board actually see what that aesthetics looks like. The applicant also wanted, wanted to have a picnic table size, so I'm going to say three by three table along with the sign, that could display some of the goods at some point during the hours of operation, that that, more detail of that also be part of the administrative approval. The applicant has agreed to properly insulate both the existing garage, I guess, and the proposed building, with sheetrock and other measures to ensure that noise doesn't dissipate. There's been testimony as to lighting, that there'd be no light spillage as to safety. And if, at this administrative approval, perhaps some general testimony as to, again, just to verify that there, that it'd only be safety and security lighting, because the hours of operation are nine to three and not on the weekends, that lighting more than to light the property is not necessary, that the building be reviewed, and, I think this is it, and that the building be inspected yearly by the fire marshal. I think I got everything. Oh, that there be a dust extraction system, and that refuse be, be as provided by law.
I'm sorry, Kathy McInerney, what are we approving as far as utilities? Currently, the garage has...
That he be permitted to have utilities on site?
Yes, and, but not, not water, you said, right? You'll...
Well, he, no, he wanted every, he wanted, he wanted the opportunity to have all, because, and again, to Mr. Hurley's point, the limitation is that this, this new, that this new building is, its sole use is for this particular app, application. It's not going to be a separate auditorium for anything, it's not going to be a, a separate meeting place, and that it also be, have drywells and a drainage system as part of that variance plan. The height maximum as provided by ancillary structure. Yes, as a working shop, not as a garage.
And also, we're affirming the, the C requirement?
Yes, they're subsumed in that D variance.
So there, and therein lies my, my motion.
I will second that.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Marr?
Yeah, I did.
Ms. McInerney?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley? Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes. Yeah, I'm taking a break now. We're going to take a 10-minute break. Hang on, hang on.
If I may, I just want to thank the board for the great patience you've shown tonight, and, and God bless you.
You already know what I'm going to say. I mean, Sean, Sean caught me, he says, wait a minute.
You're fine right there, just, or use the, well, you, no, no, you can sit at, you go to the mic, there's a mic.
The bench.
I was going to say to me...
Do whatever you want, Mr. Chair.
Why don't we just come back?
We were expecting that, we understand. And we know you have a hard break at 10:30, which means we're not going to get, we wouldn't get much done anyway.
Exactly. Thank you for understanding that, Mr. Alfieri.
So, when Mr. Pupora would, could this be carried to, and I'll say this this way, because of the continued use of the technology and the limitations, we couldn't grant, you'd have to give notice because our Zoom information changes.
I know, I'm doing that all the time now.
How would October 21st be?
What, is, we've been adjourned a lot. Is there a September 2nd meeting? Is there, is there a meeting?
Let me look at the calendar. Let me look at the calendar.
Yes, and I have a, I have another hearing that was carried last week to the 16th, so I'm already.
16th of?
September.
They're working, they're working on it.
December. Which year?
We have a meeting on the 2nd, but it's probably filled.
I'm open. You open?
So that would be, I just want to say it out loud, that is October 7th.
That's fine. We'll re-know this, and we grant the board an extension which that, on the application.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alfieri.
Thank you.
With that, have a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Have a good evening, everybody.